himself. You should announce yourself.
Morning, everyone. Montgomery County Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March ninth order. I think we have everybody except for Bob and Nicole. Is that correct? I see Bob.
I'm here, Steven.
Yep, I see you. Jill.
Obed.
Three of us. Is that right? John, just.
We have a form.
Got it. All right. Any board comments?
I'm sorry, I don't know if any of you noticed in local papers or on DCNR's website, we have a new Director of Outdoor Recreation from the state of Pennsylvania. I think it's the first time that acquisition has been designated. And he is a Montgomery County, he was a Montgomery County resident, Nathan Redner. Happened to have gone to school with our older son and was friendly from the time they were in preschool. He has a fabulous resume. Worked all over the world, a PhD from Yale Forestry. And I think that is great for us in this region and for the whole state. So I look forward to meeting him in professional meetings and maybe he can come and visit us sometime.
Jonathan, anything? Jill, anything? Or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know that I am on call this week for work, which means if an emergency pops up, I'm gonna have to go. But I will let you know, Steven, if that happens.
Hopefully, there won't be any emergencies. Never emergencies in public transit.
I had signal violation this morning, so there's one.
Bob, Charlie, John, anything?
Nothing, Steven.
Hey, Bob, just take a look and make sure you respond to the dates for the Monco grant program.
Thanks, Steven.
On the due to poll, okay?
Yep.
Last holdout date. All right. So with that approval of the meeting minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the monthly board meeting minutes of Wednesday, February ninth, two thousand twenty-two. When I say move, is there a second?
A second.
You moved and seconded. Are there any comments or collections by board members on the meeting minutes?
Hey, Steven?
Yes.
Hey, Steven, it's John. Just want to make it known for the record, I will not be voting since I was not at the meeting in February.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any other board comments on the meeting minutes?
Steve, can I make a comment?
Yes.
It it's, I I know at the last meeting, we had a, the board had a long discussion, at least I remember it, about the farmland board. None of the board comments are in the meeting minutes. Is that by design? The the meeting minutes.
Don't reflect that.
Don't reflect the board comments. It reflects very accurately what was said by the presenter, but no comments or board discussions are in the meeting minutes. I don't know whether that's by
So the meeting minutes.
Design or not.
Yeah, meeting minutes in in general are 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 specific general description of what had occurred at the meeting, not as a bait of term. Were those, I wasn't at the meeting either. Was there, were those comments made during board comments or was it made during the form of farm consideration somehow?
Well, since I was on the farm board previously, I remember that conversation. And after that, it was an excellent presentation by Steve. But then there was a lot of board comments. I know Bob Blue had some comments. I made some comments. Others did as well. But that's not reflected in hearing. Typically, there's comments about all the presentations that are not reflected in meeting minutes. I was just wondering whether that's by design or default.
I think the the idea, I know from previous experience on boards, you know, especially elected bodies. The meeting is that these meetings are not necessarily meant to be for bait of descriptions. I think we probably go a little bit further than actually has to be done in giving out a description of what's happened on each agenda item. So to that extent, I think it's been consistent with our with the with our board meeting minutes in the past. So to that extent, I think very compliant with what we're supposed to be doing. And if we were to start to put in more comments about all these agenda items, they would be much longer. I don't think that's necessary. So especially since we're also recording
Yeah.
the meetings.
Yeah, I guess my suggestion would be if a board member says, could somebody, and this did not happen last time. Could somebody follow up on this or that? We should have it noted in the meeting minutes that board member X asked for
An act.
this follow up for this action item. So we can keep track of it in the minutes.
And I think I think also if there's something, if there's a consequential conversation that has to do with county policy, it might be reflected. Like, there was further conversation regarding X. I don't think that's an unreasonable question. How do you feel about it?
Yeah, I think that can, that's hard to define. And like, we've had long conversations and debates.
Okay.
I I worry about putting them on Karina, but I do, I I do agree with the, you know, action items.
Yeah, if somebody says, could we do this? And the board says, yes, let's follow up with that.
I'll try to stay conscious of that as the meetings are going on. So make sure that we that we're communicating in the Karina to add that to the. Yeah. Okay.
Great.
So.
Thank you.
Any other board comments? Or any other comments on the approval of minutes? Seeing none, are there any negative votes on the the approval of the meeting minutes? Any public comment? If you're a member of the public, I would like to speak on anything related to the planning commission, please unmute yourself as given your name and the municipality you presided. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, call on Eric for the contract. Community planning assistance contract for Rockledge.
Good morning. Be back in person. See everybody.
Don't be very dapper.
You know, I feel like it's, you know, it's it's a new
Right.
There was a new relationship.
You stepped up on that, so we're.
Yeah, so re, three-year contract renewal for Rockledge Borough. It started January first and will go through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Rockledge Borough, primarily, we're there to help with their planning commission meetings and provide assistance and guidance during those meetings. We also do flexible assistance for them, which can be, you know, ad hoc zoning or subdivision ordinance updates. Primarily in the past, we've done a lot of park planning with them. Mill Park and Jared Avenue Park, as well as some grant writings. But we're basically at the pleasure of the Borough Council in terms of the work and attendance at the planning commission meetings. And John Nicklos is the, and has been the planner.
All right, so before we get any comments, I'll just read in the the resolution. So before us is MCPC Resolution twenty-two dash three point one, Community Planning Assistance Contract Resolution of March ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Contract number two nine one, Rockledge Borough, length of contract of January first, two thousand twenty-two. December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, total cost fifty fifty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty-four hours, split fifty percent to the municipality, fifty percent to the county. Do I have a motion to approve this assistance contract?
I'm moved.
Moved by Bob, any second?
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Jill. Are there any comments or questions from board members on this this agenda? I'll start with Charlie.
None, thank you.
Obed.
No. No questions.
See, Obed.
I I I am fine with it.
Uh, Bob?
Yes, no, no questions.
Jill?
No comments.
Johners?
No comments, thank you.
Jonathan? Dulce?
No comments.
Any other comments, staff or public? Seeing none, are there any negative votes on the approval of the community assistance contract? Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the the North Penn School District contract. Call on Dan. Morning, Dan.
All right, so this is our fifth and final contract of this season, essentially. It's North Penn. They'll be our final one. It's April first through July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. That's the contract date dates. The contract total is eleven thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars with a district portion of eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. The district has seventeen schools, North Penn High School, which has twelve, three middle schools, which are seven for nine, and thirteen elementary schools, which are K through six. This is one of our largest, I think this may be our largest district in the U. Yeah. Their enrollment, the most recent enrollment that we have from the state for twenty twenty twenty-one was twelve thousand six hundred and three students. This is only off by about one point one percent from where we were or where we should be, five years out, which is actually, I think, pretty good. And yeah, the district is likely seen that, just looking at their at their data, you know, preliminarily. Looks like there was some pandemic effect on enrollment, as well as like some lower burden than we would have maybe expected. So that could have led to a slight decrease in the amount that they've had. We have not been asked to focus on any specific thing for them. They're not looking to redistrict or anything. They're just looking for, you know, another routine essentially updating.
You said this is the second.
This is the second. Yeah, first one was in twenty seventeen.
Right.
So with that, before we have any comments, for us, we have NCPC Resolution twenty-two dash three point two. Short-term contract resolution of March ninth, two thousand twenty-two for contract two eighty-four, North Penn School District. As Dan said, the length of contract is April first, two thousand twenty-two to July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Total cost is eleven thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars. School district will take seventy-five percent, county will pick up twenty-five percent. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Remove to the second?
Second.
Second.
Removed and second. Are there any comments from board members, those in the in the room, Dulce or Jonathan?
No.
John Erks?
Dan, did I understand you to say that based on our last enrollment projection, the numbers we gave are only about one and a half percent off than what we
One point one percent, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Is that part of the North Penn?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Yep.
That number should be in our marketing material.
Yeah.
Uh, Jill?
I agree. It should be in our marketing material. Good job, Dan.
Thank you.
Bob?
Good job, as always, Dan.
Charlie?
None, thank you. And by the way, congratulations, Dan.
What am I creating?
You're getting it that close.
Oh, oh, yeah, thank you.
I I would have thought you could get it closer, but last night.
And no comments, and also, good job. Thank you.
Seeing none, is there any comments from staff or public? On this agenda item?
Steven, I'll just note, this is Nicole. I joined a few minutes late. So good morning, everyone. No questions or comments. Thank you.
Let's see there. Great. Any comments from staff or public? Seeing none, or any negative votes on this resolution?
Great, thanks, Dan. We'll better next time, Dan. We can note that in there as well.
Next up, we have progress on the bike Monco and walk Monco initiatives, and I call on Matt or Ian to start. Good.
We are mindful for it.
Morning, Ian.
Good morning.
We have guests involved?
We've got, we've got a lot of moving pieces for this presentation today. Joining us from DVR PC, we've got two guests. Sarah Moran, who is the manager of the Office of Mobility Analysis and Design, and her colleague Erin Frank, who is the Associate Manager of the Office of Mobility Analysis and Design. They're going to show some of the tools, I guess, that DVR PC has created that we've been using here in our work. So they're going to talk about that in a minute. But at at your request, at the board's request, we are here to talk a little bit about what we've been doing since we adopted bike Monco and walk Monco. So for the benefit of some of the newer members of the board and newer members of our staff, we've got plenty of those as well. A little bit about both of these plans. They're both, they're both kind of, I guess, spinoffs from our comprehensive plan. Walk Monco was adopted in twenty sixteen. Is a walkability study for the county and has been adopted as an official county policy on pedestrian design standards. We have four selected focus areas in that plan. We had a a school where we analyzed the walkability in that neighborhood surrounding a school in Cheltenham. We did a focus area around transit. That's the Noble Station in in Abington that we took a closer look at. We looked at a downtown area, Hatfield Borough, and a commercial corridor, Germantown Pike and Whitmarsh to to basically set up case studies that any community in the county could use. And thought that they were pretty replicable. And then Bike Monco was adopted shortly after in two thousand eighteen. It is a template for where we would like to see bike corridors in in the county. It also has four case studies to look at bicycling in towns that focused around Souterton and Telford. We look at bicycling two trails. Warner Road in Upper Marion was that focus area. Bicycling to transit, that's the Ambler Septa Station that we took a little closer look at, as well as biking to school. In this case, older students, Montgomery County Community College in Whitney. So already skipped ahead to where we're at, at least where I'm at, in continuing to implement Walk Monco, which is the ongoing Safe Rest to School efforts that we've been undertaking. We regularly partner with the county's Health and Human Services Department, specifically their Office of Community Information and Education, to do safe rest to school projects each year. They get funding from the State Department of Health to, I guess, do the the health-related side of things. They go into the schools and teach students about, mostly elementary school students, about the benefits of walking and exercise, how to ride bikes safely, how to encourage walkability. They do special programs. We've done a walk to school day events, bike rodeos. We're actually meeting this afternoon with our current school, which is Roslin Elementary in Abington, to to discuss our progress so far on their committee and the work we've been doing there. And the planning commission side of the project is that you'll walk audit at the school. So what that entails is going out and sneakily taking pictures of people doing things that they shouldn't be doing, like parking and crosswalks to to then make recommendations back to the school district or the township to say, here's where we think there's room for improvement. So for example, in in an older neighborhood like what surrounds Roslin Elementary, we see a lot of missing sidewalks or broken sidewalks, tree roots that have upteeve areas where we would like to see better walkability. Sometimes it's parent driving behavior where we we think there's room for improvement. So we're actually embarking on a much larger project to work with the Perkyomen Valley School District starting this spring to do walk audits for, we've done one for Shrinksville Elementary in their school district, but we're going to do audits for the remaining schools there as well. Next slide. I'm going to pass things off to DVR PC a little bit to talk about their bicycle level of traffic stress tool. They have tools really that address a lot of multimodal behavior. So we're going to talk about this for a sec and then switch back to talking about some of the work that we've been doing together with DVR PC.
Yeah, and and if, and Lord, if I can just jump in real quick and just help frame a little bit of what you're about to hear. So when we talk about progress that we've made in Montgomery County on bicycling, walking, it's not just things that Ann has done or things that I've done or staffs have done. It's also things that we do in conjunction with others, PennDOT to a certain extent, but especially DVR PC. So they've done a number of, created a number of tools, some of which you guys might be familiar with, some of which might be new to the board. Those are planning tools that are region-wide. They're helping us do planning work. They're helping the other counties do planning work, helping DVR PC do planning work. We all work together. So we want to make sure that we emphasize what some of these tools were and brought in some outside folks. Because again, they helped to frame the larger picture of the progress that we've been able to make over the last couple of years. So with that, Sarah, we'll turn it over to you, and Ann and I will navigate on the screen.
Great, thank you, Matt. So while you're pulling up the website, I'll just give you a little bit of background. The the bicycle level of traffic stress tool, and I'll I'll refer to level of traffic stress as LTS. The goal of it was a regional screening tool to help us identify and rank roads where bicycle facility improvements would have the greatest local and regional connectivity benefit to low-stress bicycle networks throughout the region. So go ahead and bring up the website if you can. I still see the slide, so I'm not sure if it's up.
Right now, you're sharing still. It's good to share the websites there. Okay. So minimize the website for a second. All right. And stop the sharing and bump the part, like you can't share. Yeah. Yeah.
Give us a second.
What's there on?
No problem.
So stop sharing. Yeah. Go back and share. And share, we're gonna see it screen.
Yeah, share the screen.
Share. All right, so when we do that, I'll just click on this again to make it come up.
There we go, now I see. Yeah, thank you.
Way to go, Matt.
So this is the landing page, and from here, you can directly access an interactive map, or you can scroll down to view a map, a map-based scroll story. So Mike, go ahead and click on begin story, or you can scroll right down to it. So the scroll story provides a detailed description of what LTS is, how we calculated it, how we use it to prioritize road segments for bike-friendly improvements. And there's a lot more detail in this story than what I'll be able to cover today. But this first section right here is really critical. So what is LTS? LTS is a road classification scheme based on the estimated comfort of bicyclists travel traveling with vehicular traffic on the roads. And it's based on the number of lanes, how fast vehicles are traveling, so the speed, and the type of on-road bike facility. Low-volume, low-speed residential-type roads, for example, would likely fall into the LTS one category. So that's low-stress and comfortable for most people on a bike. And we call LTS one and two roads together our low-stress roads. The high-speed arterials with many lanes in each direction would be pretty stressful to ride on, so they would likely fall into the LTS three or LTS four categories. And those are the ones that we want to focus on making improvements to. So Matt, if you, if you don't mind scrolling down a little bit, just to get a feel for how the story works. After it shows some examples, it goes on to explain the connectivity analysis, and that's how we identify and prioritize roads where bike facility improvements would have the greatest local and regional impact. So that's a preview of the story map. So up at the top on the right-hand side, Matt, is a button for the interactive map. If you could jump over to that, that'll open in a new tab. And so this is the interactive map where you can really dig into the data. And you can zoom into Norristown, so you can either just zoom right there, or you can type it in the upper right, and it'll jump to it. And here you can see the road network for the entire region with the LTS categories assigned to the road network. So the green roads are the more comfortable ones, the lower-stress ones. And then the the yellow ones are higher stress, and then the red ones are even more stressful than that. So if we start to turn off the high-stress roads, the LTS four and the LTS three, you start to see the air, the low-stress islands. So these are our low-stress areas that are connected. But if you want to go to different places, you know, you may have to cross some more stressful road segments. And so now, if you turn off all the LTS roads and turn on the low-stress areas right below that, a little bit further down, if you clear those, sorry, low-stress area, there you go. So these low-stress areas are basically the islands sort of colored by how large the connected low-stress area is. So the light colors are small, connected areas of low-stress bicycle network, and then the darker colors are the largest. And if you start to zoom out slowly, you'll see this really big island, this dark purple one. And if you zoom out even further, you can see the connectivity benefit of certain trails throughout the region. So for example, the Schuylkill River Trail and the Perkyomen Trail connect all the way from the city of Philadelphia to places along the Schuylkill, including Norristown, up the Perkyomen Trail, all the way up to Shrinksville and beyond. So seeing that connectivity benefit of those trails is really cool and interesting, and also helps make the case for more connections like that. So the other tab on this page, the connectivity analysis tab, yep, there.
There, just one question. I'm not sure I understood that map.
Okay.
Thick. But can we go back to that? This low-stress areas? Yeah, I'm not sure. So the the closer it gets to white is smallest low-stress areas, what does that mean?
So this, this is a really tricky one to display on a map, but basically, those areas are the light green color LTS roads, so they're low-stress areas, but they're, they're not connected to an incredibly broad geographic area. So if you zoom in and you can see some of those are like one segment or just like a small neighborhood, but there's breaks between that and the next island or the next low-stress area. So you would have to to leave that that sort of low-stress area, you'd have to cross a higher-stress segment or use a higher-stress segment to get there. So you can't just travel on low-stress roads to get to to get all around here.
I think the talks about the smallest low-stress areas. However, if you look on the map, they're clearly the largest square miles or footage areas on the map.
You're right. I I I will, I am sort of rethinking about how we display this. Originally, we had it in like a whole bunch of different colors. Every island, every low-stress area had their own color, but it got really hard because there were thousands of different islands. So it got really hard to differentiate between the colors. So yes, you're right. It looks like there's a lot of, say, white segments on here, but they're not connected to each other. So that's, that's the point that this is trying to make. So I apologize for the confusion.
That's all right. I get that. I get what the point is. I just, it's just not the nomenclature with the map. It just doesn't connect.
If you're trying to see, if you're trying to see the connectivity, the color should be flipped. And the white should be where things are connected, so you could see, because I can hardly see the Schuylkill
The dark trail there.
The dark, the dark. But when when Matt zoomed in, you could see how that connects the differing, I'll call them pink places along this map.
So the idea of this map is to show where the best connectivity is. Is that, is that correct?
Correct, where it is right now.
Right. So in that case, the, I'm sorry, in that case, I think the white dominates. Even though, and and I think you mentioned this already, you're aware of this. I think the white is less important, but it dominates the map, I think, is what.
All right, yeah, I I appreciate that feedback. I'll I'll definitely take that back to our our next update for sure.
All right, I just want to make sure I understood.
Yeah, well, the descriptor of islands really needs to be linked up, and but what you're looking for are the bridges between the islands, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, I mean, and that that's, there's really two ways to look at it, right? One is is that, it's it's it's, where's the purple? All right, well, you know, okay, where, if I want to, if I want to bike from Norristown anywhere else, how can I go? Where do I go to be safe as I bike? But it also tells you the inverse too, which is as a planner, holy cow.
Where your investment should be.
There's too much white on this, because the white is basically your barriers. The white is all your roads that it's not really all that safe to be on, or has limited connectivity.
Oh, I didn't notice.
Well, but that's, I'm not so sure I would look at it that way. I mean, and I don't want to get too into the weeds here, but I guess if you were to see an overlay of this map to points of interest or commercial areas or places that people go to or congregate, how would that connect with the paint, the darker colors on the map? I would say that the white areas may be low, low-volume roads where, you know, people would ride bikes around them all over the place. So I mean, and then they have to cross something else to get some connectivity to them. So I don't know whether there's a need for investment in that area.
So we have Obed with his hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I get what, hold on a second. I get what they're trying to say, but I, you know, I, you kind of have to look at what the land use is and and see whether that's even something that's needed. Good, but.
Yeah, thank you. And and thank you, Sarah, for sharing this. This map is very interesting. I bike every day, everywhere. And 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 the thing is that connecting if from Blue Bell area, connecting from all the region, I come every day to Norristown, I connect to the to the regional rail, I put my bike in the regional rail. It, the connectivity, you're absolutely right, there is not. When I had to cross, for example, Germantown Pike, when I had to go from all the Blue Bell to the farm park, I had to take part of the sidewalk because it's so dangerous, used to bike on on Germantown Pike, for example, no? And if I had to go to certain center. And if I had to go to certain centers, for example, in the Ariel Tour Two, there is no really indicator to respect the bikes, to connect the bikes. And I had really to find ways to navigate in all those white highlands. But you had to cross a, a high-intense traffic areas in which, you know, I had developed the skills through the years. But it's danger, and that stopped many people actually to practice, to use biking. Even to consider today with the high prices of, of, of gas, more, more people are, is asking me, hey, how do I do this of it? I say, well, you need to have experience. Don't just go to the road, just like that. And that, but I do believe that it's important to work on that connectivity. More and more people, especially younger people, are using the bike. I see them more and more often traveling from Montgomery County Community College all the way to, to Norristown in the Tour Two. But Tour Two has nothing for biking. We have to do it because we are brave, and that is a problem. Therefore, how we can work in more connectivity, in more safety, in a way that actually can sign to the drivers, the presence of, of bikers like me, no?
Yeah, and that's, that's a really great point. And, and I think, you know, the islands, the, the idea of the islands is is sort of a halfway step. So the idea, Matt, if you click on the, the connectivity analysis tab, the idea is to really look at the roads between these islands, and where we can connect more and more of them to make the eye, the low-stress area bigger, so that more people can get to more places safely. And so that was the point of this connectivity analysis. And so these, these sort of brownish roads here of the, of the varying colors is, is the result of our connectivity analysis that help us prioritize places for improvement that would provide the most connectivity benefit. So they're divided into percentage bins. So if you click on one of them, any, anyone is fine.
The bins?
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, one of the segments, one of the road segments. Perfect, thank you. So this says that the priority score is in the top 50%. So that means if made more comfortable for cyclists, this segment would provide more low-stress connections than 50% of the other stressful roads in the county. So it might give you some decent bang for your buck. Benefits than some of the darker brown roads here. So this one was in the top 10%. And so is, you know, I, like Obed said, you could make improvements to every LTS three and LTS four stressful road in the county. But we know we can't afford to go out and, you know, make these improvements everywhere all at the same time. So the idea here was to help prioritize where we could make the most connections. And we use this a lot when we work with PennDOT through the Bike Friendly Resurfacing Program. And through this program, we've been able to work with MCPC and implement at least 15 or so miles of new on-road bike facilities as part of regularly scheduled resurfacing projects over the past few years. And I've also had some municipalities reach out to me directly, saying that they've identified projects based on these analyses results, and they want to know what they should do next. So I've often put them in touch with county planners, so they can coordinate the implementation of the bike facilities in the area. So there's, there's a ton to explore in this map. I really just scratched the surface, and I don't want to take up too much more of your time, because I know Matt and Ann and Aaron have a lot to cover. So my contact information is on the website. If you have any further questions, or you want to talk about it more, I'm happy to talk about it anytime.
Thank you.
Well, Sarah, what I was going to say, that we have a lot more to cover.
Yeah.
One question, one question here. From, let's switch, switch it to the user's standpoint. Is there any consideration or any pilot programs in giving bicyc- bicyclists navigation like we get when we drive a car? You know, and I put in a location, and it tells me I can go this way, or I can go that way. One takes more time, one takes less time. One takes more gas, the other one takes less gas. Wouldn't that be the ideal thing for bicycle riders to be able to do something like that and know how to move safely?
Yes, so, so DVR PC has actually been involved over the past year or so in the development of a tool that right now is called Rudy. And Aaron's been working on this tool as well, so he, he might have some more insights here. But this tool essentially, you put in an origin and a destination, and it gives you a route. And it returns, right, right now, it returns sort of the least stressful route that like Google provides. So you know, when you, you go to Google Maps and you ask for directions, it give you like three options. And it ranks those options by this LTS low-stress network. And it, and it says like, okay, if you go with this one, it's, it's lower stress. However, we're, we're working on improving that and making it more, more focused on cyclist comfort and cyclist safety. So that, that's something to keep an eye out for in the future as, as we enhance that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to jump back in to talk a little bit about the Sidewalk Technical Assistance Pilot Project that we recently wrapped up. This really gets at what Matt was saying before about how a lot of this work has been collaborative in nature. DVR PC has a sidewalk connectivity map that they have recently completed. And this techni- and which Aaron will show you in a minute, so stay on this slide. Aaron and I, along with his colleague Logan, partnered on this technical assistance pilot project. How could they operationalize this sidewalk gap analysis map that they have, which was an outgrowth of the work that DVR PC had done to map all of the sidewalks in the region? How can we operationalize it to, to be of more use to these communities who do have questions about prioritizing not just the bicycling, but their walkability as well? Where could they make the best improvements, get the most bang for their buck? And, and DVR PC was looking for, for someone to partner with to, to try this out. And I said, well, we have a lot of communities that want to put in sidewalks. We have this Monka 2040 grant program. We give out money to municipalities to make these sorts of improvements. And we would love to work with you to try to help them improve the project submissions that we get. So that's, that's what we did. We, we opened it up to all of our municipalities to apply to us very informally for a little bit of technical assistance. Could, and we sat down with five communities, Lower Marion, Limerick, Cheltenham, Springfield, and Upper Pointed to talk about what they had in mind. And honestly, the, the call for technical assistance was so broad that really everyone came to us with a different need in mind. Some places already had identified very strong candidates for places that could use better sidewalks. Some places weren't, weren't sure what they wanted to do. But we sat down with them, along with some of DVR PC's traffic engineers, to talk about what we thought might work best for a project, potentially to the Monka 2040 Grant Program, potentially to the Transportation Grant Program, and, and gave suggestions in a memo format that they could use going forward. We, we've offered to sit down with these municipalities again in the future if they, you know, refine their ideas a little bit and could use some more help. So I think for a first time out, this was a pretty good idea. And it was nice to see the, the gap analysis tool in, in work. So I'm going to pass the mic over to Aaron, who is going to talk a little bit more about this mapping tool and, and how we used it.
Thanks, Ann. So as Ann mentioned, in fiscal year 2018, DVR PC set out to create an inventory of sidewalks across our nine-county region. So with the help of a consultant team, we, we did just that. We, we've collected data that existed at the county and city level, and where it didn't exist yet, it was actually generated for the first time. The outcome of all of this work was a singular GIS data set that represents every sidewalk and crosswalk across our nine-county region. And it was built in a way where it was internally connected. And what that allows us to do is run accessibility analysis on this sidewalk network and get a better understanding of where pedestrian trips are and are not feasible. So before I go any further, I'll wait till the, the map is pulled up here.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great. And I apologize if you hear a baby screaming in the background. It's work-from-home life. So, so like I was saying, that we, we, through this inventory of sidewalk data, we can run a number of analyses here. And, and these are just some examples of what we can do. And many of this, many of these analyses were, were useful in the process that Ann just described in our technical assistance to MCPC. So the first analysis shown on this map is a classification of the vehicular roadway network. And if we zoom in to Montgomery County and maybe go, go towards like Ambler or somewhere, what we can see is that we have different colors on the screen. We've got green showing, showing roadways where we tend to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Orange typically shows roadways where there's either sidewalks just on one side and not the other, or maybe some broken sidewalks along the way. And then the red roads are those streets that have no sidewalks at all on either side. And so this is very useful at a high level, just as a screening tool, to get a better understanding of, of where our sidewalk network exists, where it doesn't exist at all, and where there are opportunities to, to make some improvements. The next one, this walk time to transit analysis, uses some of this network connectivity that, that I described a moment ago. And on this map, what we're seeing, all of the white dots are the various SEPTUS stops of, of all modes. We have bus, trolley, regional rail, all visible on this map. And, and the, and the green, yellow, and red dots, those are showing portions of the sidewalk network and the walk time that it would take you to get from that particular location to the nearest transit stop of any mode. And so the green dots are showing typically like five minutes or less walking time to the nearest stop, all the way up to the, the yellows are close to 30 minutes or longer. And what we see with the red dots, those are locations that are physically disconnected from any transit stops at all. And so in some cases, they're relatively nearby to a transit stop as the crow flies, but it might be missing a crosswalk to get you there. Or maybe there's a gap on this sort of linear sidewalk that prevents you from getting to that transit stop. So effectively, what this means is that, you know, we're, we're able to see places in very high detail where, you know, a small connection could be made that would then facilitate a low-stress walking trip to a nearby transit stop. The next map, Rail Station Walksheds, kind of takes this concept even further. And if, if you might, wouldn't mind clicking on the big orange dot on the screen. So this was looking at all of the regional rail stops across our region. And we did two different walk shed analyses. And what that means is basically looking at from a given regional rail stop, in this case, the Ambler Station, how far can you go in one mile on the sidewalk network? And that's what we're seeing here in a sort of green polygon. The gray polygon sort of beneath it, that's doing the same analysis, except instead we're using the Open Street Map Network, which is essentially a way of us, you know, mocking up a, you know, potential future where every street had a sidewalk on both sides. And so, and both of these are essentially a one-mile walk in all directions from, from a given transit stop, again, in this case, Ambler. And so we can use this analysis to get a very clear understanding of where there are opportunities to expand the sidewalk network, particularly around rail stations, to better provide access to the neighborhoods and communities nearby. The, the final map that we'll show on, on this page is the Islands of Connectivity. And this is very similar to what Sarah showed just a few moments ago on the Bicycle LTS map, except in this case, instead of roadways with low-stress bicycle opportunities, this is, you know, using the sidewalk network instead. And so this, and the coloring here is basically every distinct color is a singular island. So instead of the, sort of the size of the island being the color as Sarah showed on her map, what we're seeing here are, you know, just different colors, so you can just sort of spot them. And what we can see is that in some cases, we have different islands of different colors that are very nearby each other. And, and as we can see here on this zoomed-in spot, you know, we're essentially missing a crosswalk to get across Bethlehem Pike to connect this green area of connectivity over to the orange color. And so this is a tool that will allow us to really quickly and easily spot those key small segments where, where, again, it could be just a simple crosswalk. It could be just, you know, maybe 50 or 100 feet of linear sidewalk. But whatever it is, you know, there's opportunities to make these connections and expand the area that someone could walk in a low-stress manner. And here we're using low-stress to mean sort of not being forced to walk in the shoulder of a roadway, or really leave the sidewalk network at all. So, so these are all a number of ways to look at the same underlying inventory and to ask different kinds of questions and, and use analysis to really, you know, help municipalities and counties across our region hone in on not just where sidewalks can be improved, but which locations sort of provide the most opportunity in terms of, you know, return on investment. And, and this has been really exciting to work on, because, you know, basically as soon as we got into this work, we realized there are applications of this kind of analysis across a number of active projects that we have at DVR PC. So I'm just going to show a couple slides here, just to illustrate another usage of this same analytical process. So an existing tool in the DVR PC Toolbox is called Ride Score. It's currently being updated and rebranded as Access Score. It's not yet been published, but it will be soon. So I'm going to show a couple screenshots instead of a live map. But it's, you know, effectively taking this analysis to the next level. So if we go to the next slide, you know, what we're doing here is using this network-based accessibility analysis to get an understanding of what are the sort of destinations nearby to a given rail station that, you know, would warrant additional sidewalk investment. So using, you know, an analysis of the Open Street Map Network, which is again, it's kind of like all streets, and then the pedestrian network, which are all sidewalks, and then also the low-stress bicycle network that Sarah showed, we're able to get an understanding of what kinds of amenities are nearby in terms of categories, and then also how many of them are nearby. And this is used as kind of like a regional screening tool to get a better understanding of, of which rail stations could be better connected to their nearby communities and, you know, could promote more walkability and bikeability as part of, you know, last or first mile connection to and from transit. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. And for those of you that do want to visit the web map, I'll share a link in the chat in a moment. And if you want to follow up with further questions by email, my contact info is available there as well.
So members of the board, we're going to shift to the last leg, which is me. But before we do that, now would be a great time, if you have any questions, if you want to follow up on some of the tools that Aaron and Sarah just showed.
I want to go through the board and see if anybody has any comments or questions for Aaron or Sarah. Nicole?
Thank you for the presentation. You know, in my professional life at McMahon, as a traffic engineer, we use these tools regularly, particularly in our planning groups. So, you know, we appreciate some of the nuances. So, you know, I don't have any questions, but I think it's helpful for the members of this board to understand these tools and to be able to utilize them and consider them in, in the work that the county's doing. So, thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Obed?
Yep. No, thanks for the presentation, Aaron and Sarah. I would like, I would love to have the, the link of the map. It's, it looks very interesting. And very important for walking, biking, et cetera. Thank you.
Thanks, Obed. Charlie?
Yes, I had a question. Where we have sidewalks on maybe one side of the street, or maybe on one side of the street, they're better than the other side. Can we provide crossing so that we can get to the better side of the street? So we don't have to put a whole new line of sidewalks in? And is this part of your study?
That's a great question. And that was, that was one of the ideas behind our Technical Assistance Program. And the idea being that not every roadway can support parallel sidewalks on both sides. So the purpose of this analysis is not necessarily to say that we need to put one on every road. There's, there's oftentimes right-of-way and width constraints, or, or land use constraints that prevent that. So what we do want to do, though, is, is be able to highlight places where some sort of connectivity improvement could be beneficial. But this is a first and high-level screening tool. And then engineering review and analysis is then necessary to ensure that the locations that we're interested in improving can actually be improved in a safe way that, you know, supported by all the principles of safe traffic engineering.
Anything else, Charlie?
No, thank you.
Bob?
Oh, I just would
Oh, I just ordered a new bike and a new bike rack on Sunday. And after hearing Obed, I think I'm going to call them and cancel the order.
Where's this bike we bought with Obed?
That's an idea.
Yeah, yeah, join me.
You know, I, I bike down the shore every weekend. I haven't been up here. And I kind of miss it. So I went out and bought it, bought a new bike. But I didn't realize that the farm park had seven miles of trails in there. So I'll probably just start off there because, you know, the only thing I have to worry about is a deer running into me or something like that. But yeah, it's a great presentation. I'm going to spend some time, you know, looking at the maps, probably more specifically like the Perkyomen Trail. I don't know what the level of that is, but you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to the new bike and looking forward to getting as slim as you, Steve.
You got it. Robert, did you get bike pants?
I do. The, the, the black Speedos with the yellow stripe.
Please stop.
Jill?
So I was thinking this could be, this could be a good tool or these could be good tools when we are looking at candidates as part of the Monco 2040 grants.
Yeah. Thanks, Jill. John?
Yeah, this is a, this is all really good information, a lot to unpack. And I'm glad Aaron had mentioned some of the challenges that we face in municipalities, you know, in terms of right of ways, infrastructure, funding, acquisition of properties, things like that. But yeah, this is really informative. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Jonathan?
It was really interesting, but I don't have any comments.
Pulsing?
I, I found it really interesting and very provocative. And the question is, how do we get this? I mean, people who are interested in walking and biking would be interested. But how do we get a new audience to the table? And one of the things that I thought about is that now when you look at a property online, let's say, I, I think it's Redfin or I know Redfin, but Zillow, they have the walkability score in these properties, which raises the question for people who don't even consider where they're buying their properties. So I think how we integrate a new audience to these issues and concerns and make it easier for them to consider wanting to support and also locate where things are walkable. I think there may be a connection. I'm not quite sure how it could be, but I think that new audience is really important to bring to the table.
Thanks, Pulsing. So I have one question. How, how did the information get compiled to come up with these ratings? I don't know if that was brought up at the beginning, but I don't think it was, but I must have missed it. I mean, it's a lot of work to get on all these roads and figure out how to rate them. What was the method of doing that? Was it street view?
Are you talking specifically for the bicycle analysis, the LTS levels?
Well, any of it. I mean, the LTS levels, the
Where the sidewalks are.
Yeah, where the sidewalks are. I mean, how was that information compiled? I mean, you know, like Pulsing said, you could go through Street View, but
Sure.
really the way it was done?
So
how accurate the information is and how granular we got into, how granular we got into producing or getting the information to produce the map. Sorry.
Yeah. So, so for the bicycle analysis, it's built off of our regional travel demand model, which is built off of open street map. So it's an open source sort of road network tool. And it is, it could, it can definitely be a limitation of, of the, the bicycle analysis specifically because like you said, the, the region is massive. We can't go out and look at every single road for bike facilities and do it again as facilities are implemented. So it's, it's a, there has been a lot of research done, you know, worldwide, not just nationwide, on sort of assign methods of different, of signing different levels of traffic stress to road segments based on their attributes. And since we were looking at the entire region, we picked a really simple one. That's only based on number of lanes, type of bike facility and speed of vehicles. And there are a lot of other factors that contribute to the stress that a cyclist may feel on the road. But they, that, you know, since it was regional, we couldn't spot check all of those. So we, it's a screening tool, right? We went with what we could and it's a screening tool to identify places where we want to go and take a closer look and go there in person and actually really verify what's on the ground. For the sidewalk analysis, that's a little bit different. DVR PC had a massive effort a few years back that had a consultant team go through and use aerial imagery like Google Street View and, and Google Maps to figure out where the sidewalks actually are right now. And it was, it was a massive effort. And, and there's a portal designed where local folks can log in and, and suggest an update. Say like, oh, we just added a sidewalk here. We want to get that included in the map and can help sort of keep track of, of that data as it gets updated.
I know, I know there's been an effort among, I know for a few, for a fact, a few municipalities in Montgomery County to do their own bike studies. I know Abington did one and I know other municipalities did them also. Is there, is there an ability to overlay their information? Because they probably got a little bit more in detail or grangled because they're right in the neighborhood, right in those neighborhoods in analyzing roads and, and kind of overlaying that information with the information that DVR PC is gaining through the, the process that you put together.
Yes, absolutely. We are absolutely open to feedback. So, you know, for example, if, if any of those municipalities were to say, oh, you know, like we know something different about the attributes on this roadway, we would be able to incorporate that in our next update. We try to update the, the base data regularly so that we can, so it can be useful and timely for folks.
That's something we should look at because, I mean, you know, yeah, Nicole on here and McMahon did, did a couple of studies. And I'm sure a lot of that information can somehow be shared and with DVR PC so that we get a little bit more accurate with some of the on the ground analysis of these roadways and what, what DVR PC has put together.
Yeah, Stephen. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was, I was just going to say that we in Lansdale have so much information via GIS regarding all of our assets that we'd certainly be willing to share with DVR PC through Sean Green or whoever that might be to help out.
Yeah, that's on great. Please share.
The, the, the keeping up with the data, right? And making sure that you have the latest data, that you have data from every corner of the region is really a huge undertaking. It's, it's tough. We don't always have the mechanisms in place, like we do say with land developments, where the planning commission has to see them all. So we can log information and we can make sure that we have, to a certain extent, you know, coverage of everything that's going on. When it comes to the planning in particular, yeah, you know, you, you could have a township that maybe, you know, does their own active transportation plan. And we're never aware of it, you know, they could be a non-contract community. They could fund it themselves and, and we wouldn't know unless we stumble on. So it's always a, a challenge to try to do that. And I think DVR PC feels that, but we try to get at it in different ways. The interns, past interns, my staff as well. We've worked with Sarah and Aaron to ground truth some of the sidewalk stuff. We've helped them make sure at least Montgomery County has been covered as accurate as possible. So we get involved in that. And my staff is currently looking at everyone's plans and all the townships and boroughs, including their active transportation plans to get a better inventory. Those are just very, very labor intensive things, but we're always trying to do that. We're always trying to, to keep it on. But if it's okay, I'd like to, to jump into the rest of it because I, I thought it would be good just to be able to ask questions to DVR PC while they're there. Because this is just scratching the surface. But I wanted to at least also leave the board with a couple of updates on things we've accomplished in the last two years on bicycling. Is that all right?
Yeah. And to your, to your comment, I completely get it. It's, I mean, it's an impossible mission to keep up with every, every piece of information being created by every authority, township, whatever. I was just, really my question was around how the, the rating system was, was developed. And I think Sarah's response is, you know, I get it. So definitely simple.
Steve, can I just, there's one question to Sarah. Sarah, you talked about an application, Rudy, that you're working on or have worked on. Is that an app that you can download on your phone? And when you're biking, you can see like the low stress route where you want to go?
Maybe one day. Right now it's actually text based. I will pull up the link and add it to the chat so you can check it out. But it's, you text your origin and destination and it sends you back directions and, and a map, I believe.
Like an old trip take. Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, I remember what a trip take is. You know, one of the challenges that we faced when we put together this presentation was there was so much ground to cover, so many different people and different elements. And how do we want to structure it? And we went through a couple of permutations, but, you know, we felt that Anne should go first, talk a little bit about what she's done in walking, close it out with me doing biking and have DVR PC do their tools in the middle. Because their tools really inform a lot of what she and I and our staffs and this, really this whole department have been doing. Without these tools, we wouldn't really have much to stand on. It would be a lot of conjecture and planning expertise, but not a lot of data to back it up. So we are really fortunate that we have the tools that we have. And DVR PC, like I said, went over some of those. So I'll just kind of close it with a couple of things that we do on the bicycling side, some of which you'll see connections to these tools here in a couple of minutes. So well, the first thing that I want to mention, and this goes back maybe, we'll say the last two years, maybe the last three and certain elements we'll cover. Because with the pandemic, it's been hard to really make a lot of progress on expanding bicycling and walking. Everyone's attention for the last two years has been focused on public health, not so much on infrastructure or expanding it or, or other things. And so we've also had staff issues here in our section with different departures and arrivals and more departures. So it's been hard to really get on top and really drill down into these things. But we're going to go back a couple of years because we think that over the long term, we've made some real progress as a county on expanding bicycling, just like we have with walking and Anne and her group. So one of the things that we did here two years ago, right before the pandemic, was, was we made an application to the League of American Bicyclists. We wanted to get one of their awards for bicycle friendly business for the county, particularly for this building and for the courthouse, right? The county has a number of facilities and you could, you know, focus this award or make it really wide. We said the majority of the county's 3,000 employees are here and over across the street. So let's focus on that. And so we put together an application right before the pandemic hit. And we found out in April of 2020 that we were awarded a, a bronze award from the, the League of American Bicyclists. So this was a specific Bike Monco recommendation. This was literally in the tables as something the county should pursue coming out of Bike Monco. So that's what we did. We said, let's go after this award. We had to make an application that showed the things that, that we were doing, the hard stuff and the soft stuff as a county, right? So on the soft side, you know, that included good planning, like having Bike Monco, having focuses in Monco 2040, working on Bike to Work Day and Parking Day, being a part of those, using our planning assistance contracts to, to help good, push good bike planning and pedestrian planning in our communities. But then there's also things the county does for employees, you know, having HR fairs and seminars to talk about ways to get to work and bicycling, having pre-tax transit benefits, you know, bike racks, showers. So all of that distilled, we couldn't get a silver or a gold, but we're proud to get a bronze. Those are things that the county has been doing and a couple of things we kind of added to what the county can be doing. And that's what we got. So we're proud of that. It comes out of Bike Monco. We did a story map for Bike Monco. And if, Rob, if you could click on that and put that up for everyone, that's just a screenshot of what the story map looks like. And I'm sure most board members are familiar with story maps. But this was important to us because we did this wonderful plan and it's a very involved and detailed plan. There's a lot of different pieces to it. It itself tells a story, but when you just put the plan up on the website and put some text, it doesn't really convey that story as effectively as it could. And we found a story map really could show that story. So if you click on the upper right, that's the Bike Monco homepage. You click up on the upper right, that's the story map. So we basically said, anyone who comes to our webpage, do you want to see a well-distilled version of what our plan says and does? Click on the story map. And Rob, you just have to scroll a little bit just to let everyone see how, you know, we've arranged it, how things pop up. If you scroll a little faster, you know, you'll see it's, it's that. But then pictures will come up at different times, the text will scroll. And so it takes all the chapters of Bike Monco, puts them into a story map and distills the essence of it so that you don't have to read through a hundred pages of plan. You can kind of just spend maybe up to five minutes scrolling through this, getting a sense of the challenges, the opportunities, you know, the, the focus areas, all the stuff that's in it. And in the middle of this, whether we get to it or not, doesn't matter. But there is a interactive map of the planned bicycle network. That's really the crown jewel of Bike Monco is that planned bicycle network. We use that to work on a lot of initiatives, including the Pendot repaving bicycle friendly resurfacing effort that Sarah talked about. And so here, you know, instead of having to, to show static pages, we put it all into GIS and people can zoom in and zoom around, go to the place they want and, and really see where that network goes. So that said, we'll go to the next slide. Robert? And the next up is the Complete Streets Policy, which was something that was enacted in late 2019 and was also a direct recommendation of Bike Monco. And the big thing that the, is the next slide. One more. I have a clicker. Duh. Try it again. There we go. All right. So this is just a screenshot. This Complete Streets Policy is about five pages long. We presented this to the board before. But in the time since, the two, two and a half years since it was passed, we've had multiple meetings with our Roads and Bridges Department. It's been hard to have meetings with other departments in the county. Because again, everyone's been focused on COVID, what that means and how to recover economically from, from COVID. But we've worked very closely with Roads and Bridges. We've had no multiple meetings to talk about upcoming projects with them. And we've used some of the tools that Sarah and Aaron showed to help us also understand our county-owned roadways and what their priorities are and what they're capable of to start talking about ways that we can infuse the ability for all different users to use those roads when they're repaved or when bridges are replaced. So this is something that we're still working on ramping up. But we've already been using the, the policy to have the right meetings that we need to have to make sure that the county is following good Complete Streets principles in the things that we build. New bicycle lanes is probably the most important of all the progress that we've made in terms of expanding bicycling. And so Robert, again, if you could click on that, that URL in the upper right, this is something that's still a little bit, we haven't fully built this out yet with Jason Emel and our GIS section. But what we have so far is very useful to show you guys the ways in which we have worked with Sarah, worked with Pendot and expanded the number of miles of bicycle lanes. The numbers themselves may not knock anyone's socks off, but the progress itself is important. So Robert, if you can go to the upper right and if you can click on the, the left two buttons in red, the stack and the list, all right, let's put them both on the left side of the screen. Which one? That one? Yep. The legend. All right. So what you see here are colors. And these are, this is where all the bike lanes are in the county. There, there's not a lot. We weren't starting from very much. And you guys were aware of this. We talked about this multiple times, various presentations. But the ones in red are the ones that were created before Bike Monco was, was adopted.
And you say bike lanes, these are bike lanes that are on roads, not trails.
Correct. These are on-road bicycle facilities. Most of these are bike lanes. Some of them are sharrows.
Yeah.
Some of them are actually cycle tracks in Potstown anyway. So it's a mix of on-road bicycle facilities, not just bike lanes.
It's not trails.
But it's not trails, not at all. Right. Bike Monco was all about on-road expansion. That's what we focused on.
Yeah.
So the ones in red are pre-2018, which means pre-Bike Monco. And then all the other colors are what we've done since then. So if, so the legend shows you the colors and if you exit the legend, go in quickly, and then you can start to turn on and off layers here. So you can kind of see, yeah, leave that one on, expand bike lanes and turn off everything except for pre-2018. This is just a visual tool for you guys. It's, it's black. It looks better on your screen at your home computer. Probably a little bit tougher here in this room. But you can see, if you zoom out a little bit, Robert, that there wasn't much to, to really begin with, right? That's where we were when Bike Monco was adopted. So click on 2018. Yep. And so Potstown did a few things. And then right around 2018, 2019 is when DVR PC and Sarah Moran started to work with us on piggybacking off Pendot repaving to try to get bicycle lanes added under those efforts every year. And so then if you click on 2020, 2021, you can see where we've added them. And so they've been, you know, segments, short, long segments. But it, it's give and take, guys. So, well, I got the numbers here on my page. I didn't feel like putting them up on the screen. But like in 2018, we did pretty good. We got about 8.48 miles of new bike lanes and sharrows and on-road facilities in that year alone through the Pendot program. The next year was down to 1.84. But the year after that in 2020 was 9.62. A lot of it is a function of both which roads Pendot is repaving, because each road has different characteristics. A lot of it is a function of both which roads Pendot is repaving, because each road has different characteristics and some may have extra width, others may not, right? But it's also a function of the municipalities themselves and where it is. Some municipalities are really into adding bicycle lanes. They just don't want it on that road that's being repaved. So thanks, but no thanks. Other times, they want bike lanes and they want it on that road and they're willing to 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 have those discussions. Other times, they're like, we don't care. We don't want it at all. So our job, myself, my staff, Matt Pope, Beck, Lorraine, our job is to try to figure out which of those with D V R P C have the most promise. But you never know if a municipality is going to agree to want that bike lane there until you discuss it with them, make the case, show them the possibilities, answer their questions and concerns. And so it's a really big deal to get those lines on the map to actually happen. There's a lot of variables. So it's not as easy as just simply saying, we want a road there, let's do it.
Is there any momentum in one way or the other that you've seen in the past? So I mean, the pandemic pandemic has, you know, made everything more more challenging. Do you see a positive momentum toward this or you still have the same traditional issues?
It's pretty much the same traditional issues, you know, and it's all micro issues. We had a township where they have a really, really wide road and they liked the idea. But they did not want to remove parking for about half a block. And that's what trumped their concern. That comes up a lot more than you'd think.
How about how about connecting, you talked about connecting with Pendot and also municipalities, but how about connecting with like Aqua is doing a boatload of. Aqua's Aqua and also Pico is doing gas lines all over the place and then they have to go over to repave. I know some municipalities are tracking it, some aren't. Do we have any in, do we have any insight into any of that?
Yeah, we we don't. It's 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 hard to know where they are at a given time. And you would still have to go through some of this process. Now, if Aqua was doing streets in, say, Narstown, you still have to go to Narstown and say, hey, you know, why don't why don't you try to have Aqua put the sharrows in, right? And A, Narstown, in this case, just, you know, the sample case, will have to agree and say, yeah. And then when they go and ask Aqua to put the sharrows in, then they got to fight and get Aqua to do it. So there's still sort of hurdles you have to do. The other issue with with some of the utilities, sometimes they only do one side of the road. So they'll 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 repay the entire half road width because that's where their their work was. But if you put, say, a bike lane in there, what do you do about the other side? Who pays for it? And so we are working this year with our two TMAs. And there's a regional program called TOP, Transportation Options Program. And it used to be money that we gave to our TMAs to work with employers. Now it's kind of shifting for a number of reasons to more physical projects and it has slightly different focus. But one of the things we've worked with them on is trying to get a top grant to work with our municipalities and help shepherd them through not only this process with Pendot, but maybe their own process, same thing, but outside of Pendot. To tell them, you know, hey, let's look at these D V R P C tools, figure out roads that we could do this on that you own, help them find and get grants to pay for it, work through some of the regulatory issues. So we are working multiple fronts to try to make these lines expand. But most of these lines have happened, not all, but most, because of the resurfacing program with Pendot. So I'll just leave this slide with a set of numbers. Before Bike Monka, the red lines, we had 16 and a half or so lane miles. This is the two-way average. So there's two ways you can look at this. And Rob, if you zoom really into, take the blue line in the middle there, which is Morris Road, the white-blue line to the right. Yep, and zoom really close, really, really close, really close. There you go. All right. So we have data on one-way, one-directional mileage and bidirectional mileage, all right? Because there's two ways to look at it and you just need to be prepared to speak, you know, whichever way you you're talking at the moment. So we're not going to go with the one-way, which would be, you know, Morris Road westbound, Morris Road eastbound. You know, it's the same thing times two, because sometimes you have a bike lane on one side and showers on the other. So it's it's hard to always do that. But we started with 16 and a half miles of two-way average. And now we are at 43.25. So you can see we've almost tripled our bike lane mileage in the last four years. So I think that's important to note for the board here. So last thing, and we're going to go back to the PowerPoint. We're going to end on this final slide. And that is the upcoming Planning Smarter event. So Anne has been surreptitiously working the phones and trying to nail down all the details with the Hill School in Pottstown, which they're very busy people. And we're looking at mid-June for our final our final slide, our Planning Smarter event. We're looking at the Hill School, mid-June 2022. And this is going to be about walking and bicycling tools and tips for our municipal partners and anyone else who's interested. So what we're going to do is probably a couple of parts. Number one, we're going to help explain the importance of planning for bike and walking to our our partners and our audience, tell them not only the importance, but some ways in which they can use these D V R P C tools and also some other tools that are out there to make sure that they're doing plans and thinking about the strategic ways in which they can expand sidewalks and bike lanes and such. We're going to help them understand the programs and the funding that are out there so that they, you know, don't just plan to say this is what we want to do, but they've identified ways to pay for it. And then the third thing we're going to do is talk about the implementation challenges and the successes. Some of the things that we just mentioned here a few minutes ago about, you know, citizen concerns and and township supervisor concerns. We're going to put those out there with some, you know, real examples. So people understand what some of the hills they might be be trying to to walk up in order to get these things done. And then we're also going to have the requisite field visit where we can look at some of the lanes on High Street. There's a mid-block crossing. The Hill School has been a part of trying to build on High Street. There's also the cycle track Pottstown built. So we're going to show our attendees some of the things that have been done in and around Pottstown as part of the effort. So with that, we thank you for your time and we're happy to answer any remaining questions that the board might have. Thanks, Matt. So anybody else here, Jonathan?
Thank you, man. Very complicated over.
John Ernst.
A lot of stuff. Thank you for everyone that was involved. It's really informative.
Do you have a sense of how many municipalities, including Lansdale, use G I S? A lot of the stuff that's going on, especially like.
Steven, there's probably more now than there were three years ago, but I would say at least 50 to 60% are starting to implement some form of asset management and tracking.
Jill.
Well done, Matt. Thanks again for always thoroughly explaining yourself and these these figures to us. Much appreciated.
No comments, Stephen, but really informative.
Charlie.
The only comment I have is if we go out this year to inspect, my 20-year, we get out of the county and go around the county, maybe part of that, we can pick a location that Matt thinks can give us two or three of the issues we talked about today and will be better informed. It's difficult to do it on a map, but when we see it physically, I think we'll learn a lot more.
Look to keep that in mind. You're talking about when we do, we take the board meeting on the road?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Good suggestion. Thanks, Charlie. Obed?
And no great information this morning in everything related with biking, with with walking. And I just look forward to see eh the future that is coming. Thank you. Thanks for the information. Thanks for the report.
Nicole.
Thanks, Steve. You know, obviously, I think we saw today and I can speak to, there's a lot of momentum in this space. So definitely appreciate, you know, kind of the the broad presentation. I would agree, as John Ernst noted, I do think there are more and more municipalities, you know, setting themselves up with G I S and we can leverage that information at the county level to, you know, continue to, you know, allocate resources where they can be the most impactful. And it is a challenge to, you know, keep up with all the individual projects that are happening. You know, developers are installing pieces of the multimodal infrastructure. You've got municipalities going after grants. You've got the county level. So the more we can pull that information together, it does help in the decision-making process and again, you know, leveraging the most benefit from these individual projects happening. So thank you for the presentation and the discussion on this topic. I think it's important.
Thanks, Nicole. Appreciate it. Thanks, Matt, Anne, Sarah, Aaron. Appreciate the presentation. Next up is Drew. Was the Hicken.
Ongoing saga.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. Like sit here and run this or do you want to? You guys want to if I sit here and run?
I knew a trip take was right, Anne.
Alrighty. So, yeah, I wanted to update the board on this water quality improvement plan project that's been going on for six, almost seven years, I guess, depending on how you started. Jody got us involved in it, if that helps. Date this. Because we're at a point where we are, I was hoping that by this board meeting, I'd be able to say we've satisfied the regulators with all of their questions. We are, I believe, one meeting away from achieving that. And then we can be, and then we can just redraft the QIP, which would would incorporate all of the comments we've been getting and then hopefully get it approved by the regulators. Just for the for the new folks, I have just a few slides here to get us through six or seven years worth of work. But just for the new people on the board, I want to just help you understand what's what's going on. The the QIP is a Water Quality Improvement Plan, but we have to start further back than that. The EPA and in Pennsylvania, D E P assess water quality and streams every two years or so. And when a stream is non-attained, when it is impaired, the regulators then have to determine the the cause of the impairment, which is typically a nutrient, but it can be stormwater volume or some T C Bs in in some cases. And then they then they determine how much of that particular pollutant can be in a stream and have the stream still achieve its its water quality rating. And then they they say, well, how much more is in there? And that becomes the amount that they focus on. And and that becomes the what's called the total maximum daily load that has to be removed by the municipalities or the wastewater treatment plants that are discharging to the stream. So the T M D L, the Total Maximum Daily Load, is a number. It's a regulatory number. It's a target that has to be achieved. In this particular case, the the impairment of the Wissahicken Creek was determined by the regulators to be phosphorus. And the the target, the number that they came up with, was especially technically challenging. In some cases, they were saying 99% of the phosphorus discharged by a wastewater treatment plant needs to be removed. I remember the word impossible. Impossible was one of the words used to describe it. EPA's take on that was, well, there are treatment plants elsewhere that are doing it. And there's one in somewhere in New England that's achieving this, but it's a brand-new facility. And we're talking about like the Ambler wastewater treatment plant or the Abington wastewater treatment plant. They have design constraints, site constraints. Could we take technology and just plug it into the wastewater treatment plant? No. So it's technically challenging and very, very expensive. So the EPA is is currently, I'm just trying to find the number. I couldn't find the number, but they are in court across the nation, fighting with municipalities to implement these T M D Ls. It's a very litigious program. So a few years back, they came up with this new vision and they say, hey, there are issues with the T M D L program. Here's an alternative. We want you to form a collaborative framework and develop alternative approaches that still achieve the water quality goals we're shooting for. You have to involve the contributing municipalities in your effort. So we talked with the municipalities and they said, yeah, it's worth a shot to to try to do this. And so we formed what became the Water Quality Improvement Plan with the county under contract facilitating the the effort. Now, why we're pursuing it, not only is it expensive and possibly unachievable, but what we found through looking at studies and doing studies of our own with Temple, there's a complex interrelationship between nutrients and sediment. And there's a great deal of altered hydrology. And by altered hydrology, what I mean is pictured there, that's the headwaters of the Sandy Run. Typically, a headwaters is a nice wooded area with a small spring, maybe a little wetland that then becomes a stream and flows down. This, the Sandy Run, the headwaters, is an intersection, a paved intersection. So the hydrology of the watershed has been drastically altered throughout, not just the Sandy Run, but throughout. And impairment comes from many various sources. So the Water Quality Improvement Plan allows for this comprehensive cooperative approach that then looks at all of these different sources of impairment and looks at many different ways of approaching it. Instead of just, you know, the regulators, and when I say the regulators, I mean EPA and D E P. Instead of the regulators focused on its phosphorus. So we formed this partnership and and the blue on the map in within the watershed shows the municipalities that have signed the intergovernmental agreement, agreeing to work together. The the pink is the non-signatory municipalities. And if you can't see the pink, it's because it's very, very small. There's this wee little part of Warsester, a little part of Horsham, and a little part of Upper Merion. And the rest, over 98% of the watershed, has been working together cooperatively for the past six, almost seven years. And this is a big, big point with the regulators, that we've stayed together, that we continue to work. It's one of the reasons why they're being very patient with us. Typically, the EPA or the D E P would be by now saying, look, we need a plan. We need, we need, we need a proposal. And they'd be champing it a bit, chomping at the bit. With us, they're saying, no, you're working on it. This is great. We're glad to see you all together. So we're trying to keep that cooperative move while we finish up the project. The process is very quickly, we had two years of data gathering on our own. The Wissahicken Trails, the Watershed Group, has a bunch of data. The Philadelphia Water Department has data, U S G S has data. This is an extremely studied watershed. We put all that data together and looked, including some some modeling and scenario analysis to identify the issues. And we think that our strategy that we've developed, which is holistic, it's adaptive, and it involves many different approaches to achieving the the goal. We think our strategy is a sound strategy that's going to achieve the desired results by by the regulators. I'll get to that in just a moment. What we what we put together in the plan to support our intention that it's not just phosphorus includes, you know, maps like this that show that the gray gray area is land that was developed previous to runoff control requirements. So a lot of the property in the Wissahicken has been developed without substantial stormwater controls. And even if there are stormwater controls, typically, they were just controlling the 100-year storm. So the rest of the storms, the typical summer storm that we receive every year, every two years, was just into the basin, into the basin and out of the basin very quickly. That's what I'm talking about with the altered hydrology. And what we get is this type of flow chart in the Wissahicken. These are dates in May. I just picked it off the U S G S monitoring site. The blue line shows the flow of the Wissahicken. And on May 6th, May 13th, May 20th, and May 27th, we had not even a hurricane by any means, just a storm. And you can see how quickly the flow of the Wissahicken like shoots up to nearly 1,000 cubic feet per second and then drops back down very rapidly as well. That's very stressful to the aquatic organisms. It causes bank erosion. There's no no real chance for infiltration. The hydrology has been drastically altered.
Was that a series of storms or?
That was just, that was, you know how you get a week where it rains like on Tuesday and Thursday and Saturday? This typical, it wasn't like a, you know, Hurricane Ida came through or anything. It was just, yeah, a series of storms. The other side of the coin, and D E P is there, and EPA are very interested in in this, are the wastewater treatment facilities who have been cooperating with us right along with the municipalities. There's four, pardon me, there's four in the watershed, although the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority likely in the next few years will send their flows over to Ambler and discontinue operation. They're in the floodplain of the Wissahicken in the Fort Washington office complex. They've been flood. in the Fort Washington office complex. They've been flood-proofed, but it's very difficult for them to continue to operate there. Anyway, we have wastewater treatment facilities, and they are a source of nutrients in the watershed. Interestingly, they're also a source of base flow. They represent about ten million gallons per day of flow in the Wissahicken. So in between storms, especially in the summertime where we go a long period of time between storms, the base flow can be as much as sixty percent wastewater effluent. So they, at times, will have a very strong impact on water quality in the Wissahicken. So it's very important we have them there. They are committed to working with us. They have proposed a number of actions to be included in the plan on their part. And the end result of all this disrupted hydrology, as I've said, is the aquatic life use, which is what DEP and EPA refer to, the insects and aquatic life in the stream is impaired. All of the red lines on the map show impaired creeks. There's only a few blue that are not impaired currently, but I've been told with this current assessment that DEP is working through right now, that those, you see their Prophecy Creek and a few of the other creeks will be designated as impaired. So the hydrology, to me, is, is, is the main issue. Aquatic life is measured by what's called the IBI score, the Index of Biological Indicators, and it's a, it's a group of tests that they go out and they look for certain bugs in the stream. So everybody refers to it as the bug score. If I refer to it as the bug score in this presentation, you'll know what I'm talking about. And if you find certain insects, certain types of insects within the stream, it's an indication of higher quality, and they look at a number of indicators and they give it a score, and if you achieve a score of above a certain number, forty usually, then they say the stream is no longer impaired. That's our goal. We want to improve hydrology, improve water quality, bring back the bugs, and achieve a acceptable IBI score. As I said, the watershed is urbanized, the impervious surfaces, the flow is very flashy, low dissolved oxygen, D O, dissolved oxygen, which the organisms need to breathe. There's sediment, and there's a lack of aquatic life. What we're looking to do, in a sense, is to minimize the impacts of urbanization through a number of ways. You see the fourth bullet there, area, or fifth one, area treated, in parentheses. Area treated is kind of our way of saying how much of that land that wasn't given stormwater controls when it's developed, how much can we root that runoff from that land through a, a new facility or an upgraded facility? We have a, a goal of, of over four thousand acres to be treated, the runoff from four thousand acres to be treated, to help restore that impact of urbanization. But we also have other things like repairing buffers. We want to do some stream restoration. The wastewater treatment plants are going to optimize their operations. They believe that they, you'll see in a little bit, they believe that they can achieve even more than they've done just about five or six years ago. They went through a period of optimization, and they greatly reduced the phosphorus in their discharge. We did not see a corresponding bounce back from the bugs in the creek, which again sort of points us to say that phosphorus might not currently be the problem. Maybe a point in the future where we say we restored the hydrology. Now we want to work on removing nutrients, but we don't believe that's right now.
That's always been like a question as to whether they were focused on the.
Right, right. They believe they are. That's, that's really the issue. Getting, getting the regulators off that dime has been really, really tough. And I'll, I'll talk about.
That was an early on conversation, but they haven't had the right thing to go after.
It's an ongoing conversation, Steve, and, and we've had some really good conversations lately, which I'll talk about in a moment. A, a big part of our program involves monitoring to see how we're doing. I haven't mentioned it yet, because this has a twenty-year implementation which is, very few comprehensive plans don't even have a twenty-year implementation period. We have a twenty-year implementation period during which we're going to monitor, see how we're doing, and then every five years or so, we might tinker with our recommendations and our approach a little bit, revise it based on the data from the monitoring, and then continue to to work. This will all go into the draft, into the final QIP. One of the things that the municipalities like about this, aside from the collaborative aspect, they really like the fact that they're all in this working together. One of the other aspects that they are very confident in is the fact that it's data-driven. We have, we had Temple involved for a few years to do a lot of, of the water quality monitoring, and then we have Philadelphia Water Department who have been essential to this process, and the scientists they have there are really helpful in explaining the data to people like me and other laypeople to, to help them understand what we're working on. And so the fact that this is based on actual data is, is a big plus for the municipalities and also the, the regulators. And then I mentioned this already, but during our implementation period, we have projects such as stormwater management facilities to be upgraded, naturalized, new ones to be stalled, green stormwater infrastructure, and so on. Policies, zoning ordinances, you know, looking at infiltration of stormwater more than discharge the surface waters because that helps restore the hydrology. And programs, Ambler, Ambler has a rain garden program. Philadelphia has a subsidy program for onsite stormwater facilities, and, and we're looking at maybe taking that and adapting it watershed-wide and expanding it. So there's projects, policies, and programs, plus the wastewater treatment plan optimization that we believe is going to help us see the bottom bullet point there, achieve the IBI score, the bug score that we need to achieve.
Do you plan to say, let's municipalities incorporate those stormwater fees and taxes, and then Shell and them is working through there?
That, yeah, that, the idea of a stormwater authority, a stormwater fee, that comes up often. Funding is a big issue, but we're, we're thinking maybe we can get at least a jumpstart program together through ARPA or the infrastructure programs. We're, we're currently working on that. This is not all of the, the projects, but this is just a snapshot to give you an idea. We're, we're looking at public lands, private lands, retrofitting existing basins, putting in new green stormwater infrastructure, looking at reducing impervious, looking at stream restoration, repairing corridors. There are, I believe seventeen golf courses in the watershed. Two of those have, in, in recent years, on their own, naturalized a lot of their the land between the holes, the land along the streams. We're looking at taking their example and trying to apply it at the other watershed, the other golf courses. So a number of, a, a large number of projects, over a hundred and forty projects, anticipated over a twenty-year implementation period. And the wastewater treatment plants will continue to apply the best technology as that technology develops to optimize their performance. We need them to continue in the partnership because EPA thinks the wastewater treatment plants are, are critical, and they are, but because of EPA's perspective, we want to make sure the wastewater treatment plants are part of the process. And they've actually proposed to do a little bit on their own property. Not that it's going to have a huge impact, but it sort of shows the level of commitment where they're saying, you know, we could, we could buffer the stream where we own, you know, portion of the stream for our discharge and so on. So they're, they want to do as much as they can. Now here, let me just take a break and say, when, when we submitted the plan last year, we got back a, a letter from DEP and EPA with about twenty-five comments. And we took those twenty-five comments, we sort of grouped them together, and quite a few of them, as you might imagine, double phosphorus because there were other issues as well. DEP and EPA suggested that we meet with them periodically, a small group of regulators, four or five regulators, rather than the whole bunch of people from EPA and DEP, which made the meetings really long, and it was hard to get, you know, much accomplished. They said, let's take a smaller group from your partnership and a smaller group from EPA and DEP and meet and just kind of work our way through some of these issues. And we've been doing that. We've had six meetings. We've got two more to go, or, or excuse me, one more to go. But one of the things they said was we want to see you model, quote-unquote, model what you're projecting to do and see if you can say it's going to work. So we, we took two methods. DEP has what they call a simplified method. I won't get into what it is, but it's a model. And EPA came up with something called Model My Watershed for the, for the Delaware River Watershed Initiative folks to help see the impact of their work. So we ran several scenarios through those, both of those models, and we came out with numbers that are really close, really close. DEP and EPA, their reaction when they saw these numbers was, wow, that's really close. So we think that the, the two models kind of underscore that we're on the right track, which is great because our track is, as I said, not so much phosphorus as it is, you know, restoring hydrology.
Is Model My Watershed from Stroud?
I thought it was. Stroud was involved in it, yes. And, and the EPA wanted something that they could give watershed groups that was simple enough to run so they could sort of gauge their impact. But yeah, Stroud was involved in it. On the wastewater treatment plant side, not going to go over all the numbers on this. There's two numbers that are highlighted. You see sixty-five percent, sixty-five point five and sixty-five percent. That was what we are projecting will be the reduction, the baseline reduction in phosphorus when we put the wastewater treatment plant projects in place. It's not ninety-nine percent, but we're saying that sixty-five percent in conjunction with the projects is going to get us down to a range that we think will restore water quality in the Wissahicken Creek. One of the last meetings that we had with the small group, DEP and EPA actually came forward and said, here are six studies that we accept, that we support, that have been done since probably in the last twenty years. Here are six studies of watersheds that come up with a, a, a baseload for phosphorus that supports aquatic life that isn't as strict a number as we're proposing. I mean, this was, I, I was amazed when they did this because they're essentially saying, yes, our TMDL said you've got to get ninety-nine percent of the phosphorus out of the water, but here are six other studies that we accept, or scientifically peer-reviewed, that have a higher, a less restrictive number. And they said, if you can apply the science from those, from one of those studies to support your proposal in the plan, that, that, they didn't say, we'll accept it, but they said it's going to make a very strong argument. And this was offered by the regulators, which amazing. They're, they've been very supportive.
So is, is your goal going to be the IBI score or the TMDL phosphorus loading?
It's not the TMDL phosphorus loading. It's, it's well, the, the TMDL phosphorus loading that the EPA proposed would achieve what they're calling water quality standards. So that's their goal. They want to see water quality standards achieved, however it is, it is done. We're saying that all the work we're going to do is going to get the IBI scores into this acceptable range, which then will indicate that we are achieving water quality standards.
Which translates into achieving the water quality standard.
So what we're going to do, you know, the old, here, I'll date myself, Steve, the old shampoo, commercial, lather, rinse, repeat. That's what we're going to be doing. Phase, the phases are broken up into five-year periods. The first phase involves a lot of formation, which we're actually going through now in, in anticipation of the plan approval. But the next three phases after that, implement, monitor, and then based on the results of monitoring, adapt. The wastewater treatment plants, you see, come into play more towards the later years because we're referring with those first ten years going to help us get hydrology under control to a degree that we would then be able to see the impacts of, of phosphorus removal at the plants. They're going to be upgrading their plants all along. EPA was very stern about that. They said, we don't want to give the wastewater treatment plants a ten-year vacation. We want them to be doing things all, all along. But we think by about halfway through the implementation period, we'll be able to see the results of their work. So we'll be getting to it before then. I, I mentioned these small group meetings. We've had, well, there's five listed there. Metrics has been three meetings. Metrics are, are just the, you know, the target. How are we going to say we've achieved what we're going to achieve? We had the first meeting. They went slide by slide, not in a like a cross-examination kind of way, but they went slide through slide through the presentation just because they wanted to understand it so well. And as a result, we had to make it into two meetings because we went really, really long. At the end of their last meeting, EPA said, you know who'd really love to hear about this? And this is how they said it, are the guys down in West Virginia. So their West Virginia office. We're going to present to them on the twenty-third.
Why West Virginia?
Because this is something that they do a lot of down there, I guess.
Do they? I think that's EPA's model.
Yeah, so they're like super interested in, in, like, in this. And, and that's the attitude that we've received from EPA and DEP all along, very enthusiastic, very supportive. David Burke down at DEP, several times during these small group meetings, will break into the conversation to explain our point to the EPA, which again, you just don't see that usually in a, in a, in a project. Usually it's them on one side of the table and us on the other. But we really have a sense that they are supportive of what we're, what we're doing. So our current effort involves this last meeting, then preparing the revised plan to be submitted to the regulators, get their approval. There's going to be a, a big lift with the municipalities. We do have municipalities represented in this partnership, but there's been a fair amount of turnover on municipal boards. We, we lost our one co-chair this last election, Mark Gray from Lower Quinnen. He's, he's still on the, the project, but he's no longer supervisor. So we've lost some contact, we feel, and we've got to make sure that they're supportive of this. Paul Leonard retired. So there's been some, there's been a little bit of shakeup, and we want to make sure that municipalities understand what they're committing to when they do commit to it. So you can see that we're revising the QIP, submitting it, making a presentation, at least one to each of the municipal boards, the environmental stakeholders. We want some form of adoption or buy-in by the municipalities, and then we'll submit it to DEP and EPA for approval, and then we'll begin the twenty-year implementation period. Are there any questions, comments?
I'm just tired of listening to you.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 I don't mean, I don't mean. I'm, I'm, that's.
I know what you're saying. You're, you want to, you want to, you want to get in there.
No, I trust that you've been doing this, the tenacity that you have to have to do this. My question, is it the stick over the municipalities? I remember when we started with this with Montgomery Township, and, you know, it was a threat of, of financial room, you know, kind of big numbers on them to bring them together, but now have we moved to the point where they understand this civic responsibility for doing this? Or is it still the kind of a whip?
Well, it's not so much the whip. You're right. Initially, and they had different people down at, at EPA especially. There was one woman especially who was just, I mean, she, she said, the wastewater treatment plants have to do this. If they don't do this, then you're in violation and you're going to get fined. And that was a big, you know, push to get municipalities to the table. But not so much. She's, she's been reassigned to a different project.
West Virginia.
Yeah. She's still down, but they are seeing more that this is, number one, it's going to be expensive, but it's not going to be as expensive as the TMDL. And yes, it is going to help them. Paul, Paul Leonard, I'm very sorry to see him retire. He was a, a big cheerleader for the fact that water quality and environmental improvements translate into economic, you know, returns. And, and he made that point over and over again. I think the municipalities, at least on the partnership, you know, understand that. So it's, it's not so much, and I haven't heard the, the regulators issue the threat. They used to say, well, you know, that draft TMDL is still on the shelf. We can bring it down to the shelf at any time. They haven't said that in probably two or three years. So.
Sort it down.
I think we're making some progress.
Anything else, Dulcey?
And Dulcey, the next time I present to you, I hope I'll be saying it's approved, and we begin to implement it. Jonathan, any questions?
This brings me back to my working days, you know, with clients and all this sort of stuff. You should be commended for sticking with it. This is a novel thing with DEP. EPA has probably done it elsewhere in the country. I think this is very novel for DEP, so it's getting the regulators to understand they don't have to, you know, use the stick, beat on the big polluters, scratch that. There's a different way to do it, and it takes a long time to get everybody to understand. And that's why, yeah, changing the culture, exactly. So nice presentation, very interesting.
Hi, John. John Ernst?
Wow, boy, boy, I, I have a lot of comments about this. I'll keep it to a minimum. Drew, thank you so much for, for presenting this and, and sticking. Drew, thank you so much for, for presenting this and sticking with this topic for as long as you have. Lansdale is lucky enough to be involved in three different watersheds in the county. So we're not only dealing with Wissahickin, but two others. And we have these type of challenges in every watershed, especially when you're a community that's two hundred years old, plus or minus. It does become a challenge on finding the, the money, millions of dollars to invest in stream bank restorations and projects like this, along with aging infrastructure to maintain the quality of water. You know, we have infrastructure in our municipality wastewater treatment plant that's thirty and forty years old. And it does become a real challenge on where do you get the money to do this, grant money is available, you know, one spec at a time. And, you know, the engineering to design these projects just takes ages to get done. So it is a real challenge. It's, it's very easy to say, well, let's just change everyone's mindset so that they understand how important this is. Well, I get that, you know, it's, it is important, but so is fixing roads and, and providing, you know, infrastructure and trying to make it tax-based that everyone can live at. So this is one of those other challenges that municipalities deal with, you know, day to day. So Drew, I, I appreciate you shepherding this through and, and sticking with it as long as you have.
Thanks, John. Jill?
Hey there, hi Drew, yes, it's been a long time. So I also commend you for sticking through this, and um, it's so refreshing to hear that the regulators have come together on this, because I know that was the original, or one of the original point of contention, so very happy that's happening, and how many meetings away do you think this is, where you can?
We have this one small meeting. And then we can revise the, the water quality improvement plan and eventually submit it to DEP. So, I mean, it's not, it's not going to happen next month, but I, it's going to happen this year.
This year?
Yes, yes, this, this year, and I'm hoping this summer.
Okay. I'll be waiting.
Now I'm done.
Thank you.
Bob?
I'm here, at, at least the regulators gave you some type of guidance, because historically, it's just like, well, you go figure it out and let us know when you have the answer. So I, I think your, your prognosis of having a meeting this year is probably a very strong one. But a great, a great job as always.
Thanks, let's hope so. Charlie?
That's, no.
Okay, nice try. Nicole?
No questions that haven't been raised, thank you.
I'll just end with, I'm always excited to hear, because I remember being involved in some of the initial meetings. So it's interesting to see it progress, and I, we always knew it was going to be a slog and not a sprint. I'd be interested, I guess the next real big step is the funding aspect, which has always been kind of lingering out there and not able to really grasp until we got through the acceptance part of the plan, so it'll be interesting to see the implementation and cost and how it gets funded, so.
I'll just quickly, I'll just quickly mention, with, with the ARPA funding, we met with, with Tom Bonner, and, and he encouraged us to put together a present, a proposal for some work at the wastewater treatment plants and some work within the municipalities to kind of jumpstart the implementation period. The money has to be spent from that by twenty-twenty-six, I think is what it is. So it's not like this is going to fund the old twenty-year implementation period, but it could get us started. And then there's the IIJA funding as well, which may help.
That's great, and I'm glad that a lot of the municipalities in the city have stuck together. That was always like, like herding cats, so I'm glad to see that happen, so thanks, Drew.
Thank you. Okay, next up is our, is, go back to Dan for the median housing price.
Okay.
Yes.
I was young.
Oh, dude, I'm sorry, I skipped over there. Did I skip you a little bit?
Yes, yes, but I didn't want to interrupt my, yeah. My, 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 my commentary is, it goes to the civic responsibility that has to be cultivated in the municipalities to understand the quality of water, which I believe most people, eh, we might not be educated on the issue. Here at Secate, we have an environmental justice program for many years with the, now with Villanova University, in which the new generations are learning about eh, water quality, are learning about polluters, are learning about eh, care of the water. We have been learning about the presence of lead, for example, no? And all these elements that can create water quality to go down. We believe that new generations can change this. As I know the solutions that are created and that are pursuing, it will be good. But without the civic responsibility and the civic change, eh, eh, I believe that we'll confront constantly this. Few years ago, we did a documentary that is called Nuestro Pueblo, and it was a Nahuaro documentary that, that talks about the environmental challenges that the county has and that Norristown has. And water was one of the main, speci- specifically because the suburbs that surround eh, eh, it has tremendous eh, charge of eh, eh, elements that goes to the greens and that end in the, in the sewer. And there are many solutions, like the creation of meadows, like the creation of, of gardens, eh, eh, efforts that we can do in order to educate eh, the municipalities, the inhabitants, and to the issue of us to take responsibility. Then I really hope that in the future, we can also think in how to encourage education at the basic level, but also to the different inhabitants of the county. Eh, great presentation, and I am so glad to see all the follow-up. I did some screenshots that I feel very important to share with environmental class, eh, justice class, and I thank you so much for all the work. Yeah, and I will have to say goodbye, because I have to run to a, to another meeting. But, and I'm sorry that I had to cut short today, but thank you so much for all the work, thank you.
Nice to meet you last time. It goes to median housing prices.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Hello, everybody. If you don't know me, my name is Dan Freeman, I'm senior county planner here at the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Uh, one of my chief duties here is to, you know, as you all know, to manage the data. Um, and one of the biggest reports we publish every year, that's most interesting, I think, to the public, is the median prices for housing, right? So this is the median prices for the year of twenty-twenty-one. We source this data from the BOA, uh, from there, we whittle it down to what we call just, you know, the market rate transactions or arm-length transactions. So from developers of new homes to homeowner occupiers, or from homeowner to homeowner. So we count, we get rid of all the things like investors and, and, and destruction, demolition sales and things like that. So in sorry, I always got to click on the screen once. So overall, in twenty-twenty-one, Montgomery County had twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy market rate sales of homes with a median sales price of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This is a thirty-five thousand dollar increase over the previous year. Um, it's also an increase in the total number of sales, it's the highest I think we've seen in the last decade, uh, but not as high as what it would have been pre-recession, pre-two thousand eight. New homes, the median price for new homes in twenty-twenty-one was five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, it's an increase of over sixteen percent from the previous year. This is, uh, the first time it's cracked over five hundred, too. Uh, existing homes, the median price for existing homes in twenty-twenty-one was three hundred and fifty-five thousand. This is an increase of nearly ten percent from the previous year, this is a pretty high increase, especially for existing housing. Um, housing types, uh, when you're looking at all of them, uh, all of them grew, not, not one of them declined in any fashion. In fact, most, most of the increases were high, high single-digit or, or low double-digit increases, percentage increases. Uh, but detached, attached and multifamily rose between ten and twelve point four each. So when looking at all units, you can see that, like I said, we have figured that in seventy thousand for all types, but when you break it down by different types, you can see it really, you know, I think it's, 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 it seems more dire in a way, because the detached, again, again, for the first time, cracked four hundred, well over it, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, that's an eleven and a half percent increase. And the number of sales is, is still higher. What I think is interesting here is these prices, you know, if the sales go up, it's counterintuitive, you don't think that the, necessarily the pressure on prices should be high. But what goes along with this increase in sales is a decrease in the average inventory, though. So that's what keeps pushing that price much higher than it would be. A normal, normal price increase for a home should be roughly around inflation, you know what I mean, around three percent, three or five percent is considered a healthy price increase on a home. But, uh, another thing I want you to pay attention to is the fact that attached housing, which is oftentimes the most, you know, relatively affordable and entry-level housing in the county, has also almost achieved a three hundred thousand dollar median price mark. And multifamily, this to me is like a, a kind of a, a little bit of an alarm bell, because this kind of price increases is un, un, unseen, since I've been here and even in many times before this, for multifamily units. Um, what we do build in this county is increasingly luxury and almost as expensive as attached homes will be in this county. So they're not really an affordable option, new ones. Older ones are getting more expensive, because again, attached and detached are getting harder to come by. So people who are not, say desperate, but are need a home or really want to get into the property market, I think are increasingly turning to multifamily, and that's what you're seeing this price increase for. So this is just showing you the adjusted amount of all our prices going back, so this is a, you know, this looks okay, this looks good, you know, your home's worth more than it now was, you know, adjusted just a couple of years ago. But if you were to go back all the way to two thousand and six, it would be about right here is where the adjusted rate would be. So we have now finally, finally, I don't know if it's a great thing, surpassed the, you know, median price adjusted from two thousand and six, the last bubble height, okay? So we're now above the median price that we would have seen at that time. This is just showing you the, the sales prices and their trajectory, you know, in a line, and I think you could just see that as of the last couple of years, it's more, a little more exponential, it's not so gradual. Whereas, you know, we were, it took almost, what, um, seven years to, to, to go up fifty thousand, and it took another, what, two, to go up another fifty? So, yeah, not great, that is a pretty big incline, and the steep, and it's the steepest in detached housing, which is again, still the most sought-after type in the county, clearly. Uh, but again, this is what I think is also most interesting, is the multifamily now has increased the last couple of years. This is just showing you the, the number of sales, so you can see, basically, the only thing that's really interesting here is the fact that we did see a decrease last year in all types, and overall, that's mainly due to the pandemic, but that, you know, we, we shot right back up into a ten-year high. So, you know, it's, we weren't, we're not deeply affected by pandemic, people being afraid essentially to buy homes. If anything, people may still be stammered about selling homes, that could be potentially why we're not seeing enough inventory. Um, but, um, you know, overall, a healthy inventory is around six months, that's considered a balanced market where it's just for both seller and buyer. Right now, we have fifteen days of, of inventory, that's, that's a cri- that's a crisis level. There's almost, if you can go, you can go on Zillow, look up a home under three hundred thousand, you won't find maybe less than, about ten, ten, what's the names now, listings. When looking at new units, again, the overall was sixteen point two percent higher. I think a lot of this is, is due to increases in labor costs or scarcity of labor, increase of materials costs and supply chain issues. That is, and, and if all the construction, you know, across the county, all I keep hearing about is how they can't get ductile iron right now. So that's, you know, throwing the project off by three months, or they can't, you know, they can't source certain, certain metals and things that they need. So I think that's partially what's driving it up, but a detached home went from five hundred and seventy thousand dollar median last year to six hundred and fifteen this year. That is a twenty-one point four increase. That is, that is the highest increase of any of the types across all existing or new. Um, and the number of sold was about the same, uh, was less attached were sold. Overall, this is what's interesting, too, there were less new units sold last year, and that could also be driving the existing market higher as well. Because if they're delivering a little bit less or being able to sell less each year, it's possible that that could also drive people to the existing if they're searching for a new home. Uh, looking at new, new units as the median prices, you know, on a, on a line chart, you can just see, I think, you know, you were seeing actually a decline in the median price for detached units the last couple of years, like a kind of a more of a stabilization. I mean, it's, it's variable, there's all different types of, you know, houses that come in different sizes that affect that marginally. But, you know, this is a pretty stark, you know, breakaway from that pattern. Um, and, you know, I think what else is interesting, too, again, multifamily, you know, even new units, you know, back when the median was a lot lower than it is now, like, these are no longer really a, uh, an affordable new type. You know what I mean, the way that they're built at least, if they were built to a different spec, it's possible, if they had less, they had less rooms. A lot of the condos we see being built are usually two and three bedrooms, they're not usually smaller units, we don't see as many smaller condos being built. Uh, and then lastly, looking just looking at the existing units, it's almost ten percent growth, like I said, uh, to three hundred and fifty-five thousand, eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty sales. So the growth in the sales that we saw was chiefly due to existing sales growth. The detached is four hundred and twenty-five, attached is two seventy-five, coming from two fifty-one last year. And multifamily increased from one seventy-five to one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, it's a thirteen percent increase in price. And they even saw two hundred more sales, too, which is also a pretty big jump from year to year. So this is just showing you the map where it's at, last year, we had about three municipalities that were dark brown, so over five hundred thousand. This year, I think we had eight, so, and they're primarily in this little knot right here of municipalities. Um, so Whip Pain, Lower Gwinnett, Upper Dublin, White Marsh, Lower Mary, Narberth, Worcester, and Lower Moreland all have medians above five hundred thousand. Uh, increasingly, mid-county is also becoming more expensive. Um, we're seeing now, you know, medians in the four hundreds, or we're, we're seeing three hundreds before. And even farther out west, look at Southford and Upper Southford are now four hundred thousand, over a four hundred thousand dollar median. Um, some of that could be due to more new housing being built there than there is existing housing kind of on the market, so there's that kind of dynamic, too, especially with the, with the rural, more rural municipalities. And then also even Western Monco is starting to see price, you know, bigger price increases. So even new homes, especially out here, too, are now cracked to three hundred thousand mark, they're usually routinely above that. So looking at comparative data, so looking at the region and the greater country as, you know, as a whole, looking from a national association of realtors data, the median sales price for existing single-family homes was three hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred dollars nationwide in twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, that's an increase of seventeen point nine percent. Um, in the northeast region, the median price was three hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred, which was an increase of fifteen point three percent, so a little bit less, but overall, higher absolute value. Uh, when looking at the rest of the region, we're pretty much in line with the percentage growth. Bucks and Chester have a slightly higher percentage growth than we do, and slightly higher medians. Uh, Delaware and Philadelphia are the slower growers, but I know means are they a slow growth, nine and eight percent are perfectly fine. Um, and I, I think it's more just reflective, I think there is more inventory in those markets. So like in Philly, there's about two months of inventory on average, you know, monthly inventory, whereas again, in Monco, it's fifteen, eighteen days now. And then this is the last, last, one of the last slides, this is our, excuse me, our affordability index. It's just a rough quarterly, you know, calculation of correlation of median household income to median home price. Median household income in twenty-twenty-one likely raised around three percent, the median home price was ten point four, so it's three times higher. And this is, I think, what is, you know, not, not so great. Um, you see that this, this figure here at three point nine three, so the average home or the median, right, the median price of a home is about four times more than the median household income now. It's the highest it's ever been that we've been doing this, this, this calculation. Now granted, it's not nearly as precipitous, like, so it may not necessarily be a bubble, in the sense that, you know, last time, you know, we still had an abundance of units, you know, there was different circumstances that led to the bubble then, it was more open lending, a lot of people buying homes who really couldn't afford the homes they were buying. This is different, we have a scarcity of, of inventory that's driving these prices higher, until that rectifies, this, this won't change. So in twenty-twenty-one, median housing prices increased by ten point four percent overall. The number of market-based sales went up eight point nine percent. These figures show a market out of balance. Since twenty-eighteen, demand has increasingly outstripped supply as evidenced by the severe decrease in monthly average inventory. This current market benefits sellers disproportionately and may prevent more families from transitioning to homeownership, which I think is the most important takeaway from this, is that this county is being, coming increasingly unattainable for low and even middle-income families, especially for entry-level housing. for low and even middle income families, especially for entry level housing, you know? Existing unit medians increased by nine point nine percent, it's a slightly higher rate of growth than in twenty twenty. After adjusting for inflation, the median sales price is well above the value from ten years ago and has surpassed the adjusted median price from twenty, two thousand six. And prices on new units increased by over sixteen percent, new detached, single family units increased the most at twenty one point four. The most expensive median prices can be found in Lower Gwinnett, Lower Marion and Worcester, and the least expensive can be found in Schwenksville, Norristown and Potsdam. So what is to come this year in twenty twenty two? I mean, most analysts say about the same, about twenty percent growth is what a lot of the major analysts are, are, are saying that they're expecting to see. Part of the reason that this is too, and I want everyone to realize this, is that increasingly, these detached homes and attached homes are not necessarily even being sold to homeowners. They're being sold to investors, flippers, who then take the house, do their flip and then make it unattainable for what would have been an attainable entry level house, right? So what my father did when he bought a house, when he bought a house in Silverbridge, he fixed it up for ten years. You know, he bought an older home that needed work, right? That is, that is increasingly harder to find in this county. Because when someone comes with cash, that buyer, that, that seller is like, I don't, I don't want to be free to get a mortgage. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with the cash buyer. And we've been seeing that increasingly. What used to be any less than ten percent of sales in this region, I think, is now almost one in seven sales are to an investor. And that is definitely what's crunching this market. So even if more inventory comes on, if they are continuing their, their, their rapid pace of acquisition, it's not really going to have a market effect on the prices, so they're not really going to come down most likely. This is a national crisis, not a, not a local one. It's not one that I'm trying to be like alarmist and like make you scared, but at the same time, we do need to treat it like the crisis is, because it truly is one. And we are trying, we have the Homes For All report and we're doing other research and policy analysis right now to figure out if there's anything that we can do from a policy perspective that might address this shortage issue. Any questions?
Any questions to Dan, Nicole?
Thanks, Dan, for the presentation. I don't think any surprise, you know, talking with colleagues and, you know, some young professionals that I work with, they are struggling in this housing market. People want to buy homes and, and they just aren't available or go very quickly or they're priced out. And it's, it's unfortunate, you know, but, you know, appreciate, you know, what the county's looking at in terms of, you know, our, our, you know, populations, you know, from the housing for all perspective, I think is the, the most important gap right now. So it's something, thus the report's not surprising, but, you know, alarming to say the least. Thanks, Dan.
Oh, Ben, oh, I think, yeah, Charlie?
Good report. Again, it showed that Montgomery County, if it wants to keep the good employment rate we have, has to work out something somehow to make it more affordable to live here. And I think that's our biggest challenge and it's a bigger challenge just now because it's price to living going up and the extra cost to build and extra cost for supplies as well as the labor. So it's something we have to look at for the future of Montgomery County.
Did someone say interest rates?
Yes, how would that affect prices?
Negatively, because the people who are squeezing the existing housing market are ones who don't rely on mortgage financing. So institutional investors like a BlackRock that comes in buys a thousand. One out of seven, yep, it's enough to cause this, this crunch, do you understand?
But if interest rates go up, is it gonna affect self median sale prices?
Well, it would affect what people can qualify, that people will be cut off from, yeah, right, exactly, it reduces affordability. Yeah, in the short term, I mean, overall, higher interest rates aren't necessarily a bad thing, but the, what the, the economy, conditions we created for ourselves, rising interest rates will push people out of the market.
You make it worse.
Yes, exactly.
Unintangible, the, the drop in the stock market will help also pull some investors out of the housing market.
Hopefully, yeah, we'll see.
They have to put their money in any kind of other investments because it must, the rates, the stock market has been so high. But this, the drop in the stock market, which will not rectify itself in foreseeable future, but at some point will also the people just have a price limit on you, we'll stay in that for.
Hopefully, yeah, I mean, I hope that too. Like I said, it, it hasn't really been getting better. They keep saying, oh, it'll get better in three months, it'll get better in four months. It really hasn't, even like right now, for instance, you know, we would generally see more homes coming on the market and we're not still seeing that, like where, where are all these home sellers? And now I think what we've done with interest rates, a lot of people are locked in to the lowest rate they will ever probably get in their lifetime and are even less incentivized to sell that house now. That's another problem, there's so many different little things that are coalescing to create this weird picture.
And, and there is the concern that, that I've also read by these larger entities, whether hedge funds are coming in buying housing and then forcing the people who have to rent and to lease their properties to pay higher lease prices, rent pack prices and push them further away from where they have to work or even the ability to buy a modest or to rent a modest apartment, which is really scary for people.
Yeah, and it's, I think, I mean, I just did something earlier for, for median rents for Pottstown and they're almost a thousand dollars now, where they, you know, just a couple of years ago they were eight hundred, you know what I mean? And that, that's, that's too quick for people to, to really catch up to, wages haven't dropped.
Bob, any comment?
I think, I, I don't know where these, where these young married couples are going to be able for. There was a house, you know, a couple of blocks away from me, three bedrooms, two beds, sold for five hundred thousand dollars with no real. I mean, that's a lot of money for so much of a young couple, unless they're making a.
Offer three bedroom.
Whatever they do.
Yeah.
It's alarming.
But really compared to a lot of other places in the country, I mean, certainly more rural places, but any place where you are close to a metro common area, we're still more reasonable. It's changing, but we are more reasonable than a lot of places.
Yeah, it's all relative though.
Denver, Los Angeles, Boston.
But in Denver, they make fifteen grand more on average for the jobs that we do. It's, it's all relative, so a three hundred thousand dollar price here is the top tier for a low to middle income entry level buyer, regardless if that's five hundred thousand in California. I'm not trying to discount that, but it is, it is the truth. Relatively, we're feeling it just as hard as those people in those regions.
Well, how, you know, people have been working remotely now, maybe at the end of this, and that may.
That's actually been a problem too, because it's driven on prices in areas that wouldn't, that aren't located close to metro areas. Yeah, so if anything, it's, this is also what's interesting, is that not just metro areas, but rural areas are seeing ridiculous price growth. Yeah, there's really nowhere in this country right now that's actually affordable anymore. You used to say, oh, you can afford a, a one bedroom apartment if you make the median, not anywhere anymore, not anywhere. Yep.
Jill?
Hey, I'm just listening to all these comments and I agree with, with, with what everybody's saying. And Dan, I really appreciate the, um, the high level review and all of the factors that are going into what's driving this market. It's just so concerning, like Bob had said about younger folks or, you know, that whole concept of affordable housing. It's just really, really challenging right now. And alarming. Just trying to digest it all, thank you.
John Ernst?
The only additional piece would be that, uh, wonder what the impact is on the traditional family structure in terms of, you know, adult children not being able to make that leap into the housing market away from parents. So, and then, you know, e- even married, married children that are bringing in, you know, potential grandkids to the family structure. So it's, it's a lot of details, a lot of moving parts, thanks, Dan.
Jonathan?
I mean, it's a very upsetting scenario for people of my kid's age and younger. I'm just wondering, does the planning commission have any role in trying to address the situation?
I'm gonna leave here, but.
Yeah. Only from the standpoint of, you know, we did the affordable housing study, an initiative, housing for all in the county, just to try to lay the groundwork. But, you know, it's, it's really difficult to change market, you know, market trends and what's going on, what's going on in the country and what's been going on for the last couple of years.
There are decision points, you know, there are many localized decisions and, and, you know, education, but, you know, there's reasons why those decisions are made and in the past, that's kind of written. But people do have to realize, you know, what, what the impact has on their local community of not having the housing as well as our, you know, regional beyond. So we can influence that as much as we can, but it's unfortunately, we don't have power.
I mean, nationwide, I think it was recognized that there was, you know, an overheat in a lot of parts of the, of the economy, including, including housing, which is why they were going to start to step back and try to cool off with, with interest rates thriving and stuff like that. But that, that calculus has all changed with what's going on over in, in Ukraine. Because, you know, oil prices going up, it's going to be hard to do that. So it's a question as to how all these pieces come puzzle, I mean, I do construction, I mean, construction costs are skyrocketing.
Yeah.
They have been, then they've started to level off a little bit and now they're, you know, we're anticipating anything of, anything that's oil based, petroleum based, it's gonna go up like, you know.
Plastic, so all that kind of stuff will go up.
Through the roof. And, you know, it's gonna be hard to bring any of these numbers down, they're just gonna be, if they weren't brought up because of how, how heated the market is, they're gonna be brought up just because it's gonna cost more money to build something, which in turn will start to slow down things over a period of time. But the question is like Dan said, when, you know? They thought all these increases in costs in lumber and stuff would bring the, that didn't happen, bring the market down, that didn't happen, so.
Now there's two, see the thing is, is that right now, the two largest age bands, two of the millennials, right? The, my age, thirty, thirty two, thirty three and thirty two, or thirty one, these, uh, these groups are the largest and they're all ready to buy, they're all out there trying to buy, including myself, like we're all trying, I'm, I'm trying to buy too, can't find anything, but I'm trying, you know? This is, yeah, it's a really big problem. I think once that age band may moves a bit, maybe you'll see some relief in four or five years if it's purely demographic based, but it's not, it's market fundamental. So at some point, it needs to be addressed, you'd think, by policy and not at like a local scale, at like a national scale.
And nothing untangible that we don't think about, this just happened and people just thought it was a good idea. But you have all this money that came into the system. They had the, I think it was like a trillion and a half, you know, back in eighteen or nineteen or something like that. And then you had the two bills that passed in, you know, twenty and twenty one, that just, you know, close to six trillion dollars back in the system, governmental money into the system and, you know, it's gotta go somewhere and it's going to people's income, it's going to people's, you know, pockets in some way, shape or form, and that's what's positive, this is a constant rollover of, of the economy, so.
Is there a press release together about Dan's information issued to news outlets and stuff? It's really interesting stuff and.
Not necessarily, they just put it out on social media and.
Yeah, and actually we have to, we were trying to do more press releases this year with these reports, so I think this is.
Yeah.
I'm worried it's a bad, it's not good news, but it warrants.
Well, it's, I mean, just, just the sort of work that Dan and you guys do here, it'd be nice to see it on the local news and the paper, that, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I know Rita's listening and she, uh.
Instagram now has our agendas up, you know, but we don't have that many people looking at it. And we used to have these grassroots reporters sometimes pick up stuff and then you'll see it a week later in a local, smaller paper, it might reach people better.
It's, it's, it's not great information, right? It's not information we'd like to, it's not information we'd like to see. You know, we don't like to see twenty percent price gains, I mean, you know, median price pushing people out of the market. At the same time, it's incredibly prescient valuable information for people as well. And it's possible that these type of reports too, they add to the conversation to pre, pressure lawmakers to actually address this systematically. So, yeah, I agree, we should put it out.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, no problem.
Abby, Montgomery Awards.
Hey, Stephen, so you always put me in this place where I have to do cleanup and try to pull it all out at really last minute, but I'm gonna do what I can. I'm gonna be talking about something that's a little, we have a little more control over and that's the Montgomery Award. So I am just gonna do a quick present, a quick just update of where we are. Um, and, let's see, I think the slideshow started. There we go, so it's time for the Montgomery Awards. The call for entries has not yet gone out, but it will be going out hopefully next week. And I just, this is my annual, I need your help to beat the bushes presentation to make sure that everybody's thinking about Montgomery Awards and so we can get some good nominations. That's just a reminder, the Montgomery Award program has the Montgomery Awards, the Planning Advocate Award and the Environmental Stewardship Award that is awarded by the Conservation District. So for the Montgomery Award, we have six eligibility categories. Um, and I want to go through an example of each of these. So the first one here is, is land development. This is an example from twenty eighteen in your favorite place, uh, Steve Abington Township. So this was the Lions Gate at Penn State and these projects promote excellence in planning and design. Projects include residential, office, commercial, institutional development that exemplify good design and such as building placement, product, project context, parking and circulation pedestrian amenities, landscaping and sustainable practices. So that is one of the categories. One of the next categories is revitalization. My example here is Bryn Mawr Village from twenty seventeen, this is in Lower Marion Township. These projects contribute to revitalization of older, more established communities. Projects can include redevelopment and building rehabilitation, adaptive reuse, infill development, streetscape improvements, new parking facilities and other community enhancements. We also have open space, again in Lower Marion, this was from twenty nineteen, Stonely and Natural Gardens. These projects focus on open space preservation, land conservation and community recreation facilities that sustain natural resources and enrich communities. Projects can include open space, park development, trail implementation, creation of natural areas and other recreational and heritage amenities. So we also have transportation. So this is also from twenty nineteen in Pottstown Borough, this is Walk by Pottstown. And these projects improve mobility, enhance safety and exemplify best planning, engineering and context sensitive design and construction. Projects can be, can include road, bridge, transit, bicycle, pedestrian and traffic calming improvements. And we have environmental as one of our categories. This project's from twenty fifteen in White Marsh Township, this is Dixon Meadow Preserve. These projects promote the protection and restoration of natural features and sustainable uses of resource. Projects can incorporate habitat enhancement, preparing corridor protection, green infrastructure, such as green roofs, green parking, street trees, innovative green stormwater design and energy efficiency and renewable energy. So that also kind of led in twenty seventeen to the Environmental Stewardship Award. And this is a much more focused award, but it's by the Conservation District. This isn't our group's project, this isn't our responsibility to find this project, but we do help with this project when it is selected by the Conservation District. And this is from just last year, the With the Hick and Headwaters, this is twenty twenty one award winner. And the Environmental Stewardship Award recognized a project in Montgomery County that has been completed in the last three years and exemplifies the practices of environmental stewardship and conservation for water and soil quality. And it's given by the Conservation District at, at our awards program. So this year, we are going to be adding one more eligibility category and we're calling it community. And these projects will focus on contributions by nonprofits as well as public and private sector that contribute to a community's well being and diversity. Projects could include community gardens, affordable housing and public spaces. And, um, it's not going to be a separate award, it's certainly still going to be a Montgomery Award, but we're trying to emphasize that there might be some projects that we would maybe overlook if we didn't realize that it could really be a Montgomery Award. But in the past, we have not, we have three, I have three examples of where we did, um, um, award a Montgomery Award to just such a project. In twenty thirteen, the Mosaic Community Garden got a Montgomery Award and this is an eighty four hundred square foot garden on Chester Street in Pottstown. And it is the community garden that was developed by the Mosaic Community Land Trust. Then in twenty sixteen, this is in Sauterton Borough, Reliance Crossing. Reliance Crossing is a affordable housing project in the borough of Sauterton. And this was done by, um, actually by the private sector or a combination with a public and private partnership, Reliance Crossing Limited Partnership and the NBI Development. But it's an affordable housing project that we awarded in twenty sixteen. And then in twenty nineteen, we awarded Crest Manor, which was also an affordable housing project back in Abington Township. This was also done as a, a private, private, public partnership with Penrose Development Company and the Montgomery County Housing Authority. So we do have projects that do hit that mark of community. But we, what we're trying to do this year is just to raise the awareness that those projects might be out there and to see if we can have a little more focus on some of those and maybe have more of those get nominated. So this is the other reminder, when we go to look at the project, we, we judge it on design, the process and the impact to the community. We also have the Planning Advocate Award. And this recognizes engaged citizens and appointed elected officials or board and a community organization has made significant and sustained contributions to advancing or promoting planning in Montgomery County. And these are the, the six we have done so far. We started in twenty fourteen, fortunately, our last one was in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. We did not have an, uh, we did not have any applicants we could really consider for this award. But you recognize some of these, we have Lou Anne Stocker from Upper Perk, we have the K O P bid, we have Paul Meyer, who was the president chair of the Open Space Board, um, Montgomery County Open Space Board. We have Paul Meyer, who was the president chair of the Open Space Board, um, Montgomery County Open Space Board, and at Morris Arboretum. We have the Abington EAC. We have Upper Pott Grove, um, Township, um, Open Space and Recreation Board, and we had Keith Harper, a former state rep, and really a, uh, open space and conservation advocate in Montgomery County. So this is my quick, I think I got it done in less than 10 minutes. I hope you were timing me, but this is my beat the bushes. I'm really hoping that each of you can think about, um, some projects, bring them to our attention. We're happy to then follow up on them. The committee, it's Dulcey, is going to, is the chair with Charlie and Jill as members, and will be at some point setting up that committee tour. But this is, this is my push to get everybody to think about the Montgomery Awards and think about projects. And that's it.
Thanks, Patty. That's why you're in clean, that's why you're in the cleanup position.
There you go. You can do it. So.
Thanks, Patty. So the words to all the board members, if you can think of anything, um, that you've passed by, you've seen in your community, um, something that's worth, um, mentioning to Patty and her team, um, please get those to her as soon as possible so she can follow up on them and see if we can get nominations for worthy projects and worthy, uh, people. So. Scott, you're up.
All right. Uh, well, we're at our limit, but, uh, I actually have a good list of things, but I'm going to go very, very quickly or stupidly. Uh, do you want to start off by introducing our newest planner, Eric?
Yeah, sure. Uh, Anne Dygart is the new community planner too. Uh, she started on February 14th. She did her undergraduate degree at Tulane University and also has a master's in city and regional planning from Temple University. Uh, the last two years, she's been down at Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, so we are very happy to have her here now. And she will be working with Cheltenham Township and Springfield Township. Cheltenham is updating a comprehensive plan and Springfield is currently updating their subdivision and land development ordinance. So we're also going to be doing some trail planning work, uh, with them in coordination with our open space and trail section.
Great. John?
And Anne is on.
I am. Hello. I'm grateful and excited to be here with the Montgomery County Planning Commission.
Great. Good luck in those communities.
Thank you.
If you have any problems, call Stephen.
Yeah, I am the problem in Cheltenham right now. So, but now dynamic communities, that's for sure. So good luck.
And I'm excited by what I've seen so far with them.
Yeah, a lot of stuff to do there. Great.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, moving on, we have, uh, the Monco 2040 Grant Program deadline submissions were March 1st. So we've received our applicant pool. We have 29 applications by account here. Uh, so a good turnout response, I think it totals just over $4 million in requests. Uh, again, we have $2.5 million, so the committee will have its work cut out for it as always. Um, and I do want to ask, uh, I hope it's gone, but Nicole and Bob, if you can stick around to the end of this, uh, hopefully we can come back and finalize our meeting time, uh, on the spot while we're all here.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you. Um, and moving on, the Schoolkill River Passenger Rail Authority, just want to update you. This is the proposal to restore passenger rail between Reading and Philadelphia via Pottstown and Norristown, uh, at the least in our county. And that has moved forward in the, in the aspect of a public hearing set to create the new authority, which would be a joint authority between Berks, Chester, and Montgomery Counties, and create a nine-member board. Uh, that hearing is on April 20th for Montgomery County. The other three counties will have their hearings, uh, within that same week. And if approved or adopted, then the, uh, going to affect afterward, after April 27th, I think it's the last year. Uh, so again, this is press coverage on that, and, uh, if you have any questions, uh, feel free to reach out. Uh, ARPA, the American Recovery, uh, Act for, uh, from COVID term, the $161 million that the county has to spend on that activity has been a robust public process to solicit ideas. That idea and project submission, uh, process is now officially open. It opened on March, actually, February 28th, I believe. And it, it runs through April 30th. Uh, so, uh, the public, regular citizens, organizations, governments can be submitting applications for projects or ideas, uh, through that portal. It's moncopa.org/recoveryoffice, no spaces. And there's more information as well on it there. I do want to highlight, uh, the planning commissioner is working on up to possibly 10, uh, ideas and, and programs that were, uh, and projects that were submitting. And, uh, the priorities set by the county are affordable housing, mental behavioral health, childcare, public health, and digital access. But the eligibility does expand beyond those. Uh, so I urge you to, again, go on the website, especially if you're involved with an organization or your local government. Um, now is the time to, to seize on these, these opportunities and get it in the county's, um, site. Uh, so I'll, I'll, I'll leave it, leave it at that. We just submitted four applicants for submissions for the state planning conference in October for staff to give presentations. So I won't hear back till, uh, summer on which of those will be accepted, uh, hopefully all. Uh, we always try to participate and make our presence known. It will be in Lancaster County, uh, or Lancaster City this year, uh, in October. Uh, the events list was shared, I think, yesterday afternoon, and we'll go through that, um, but there's a lot on there, uh, for the upcoming month, so please, um, um, take a look at it. And one other thing I want to give Anne, less than 60 seconds, she just introduced a new grant program to the county commissioners at the board meeting last week. Uh,
Sure. Um, the quick version of the story is that the county commissioners are interested in supporting the county's emergency food provider network with monies to purchase a warehouse to, to turn into a food distribution hub. We don't have the same kind of capacity that, say, the Chester County Food Bank has, but it's, you know, large distribution facility. So this would be a step in that direction. Uh, I'm a little putting together a grant program to be posted on our website, hopefully by this Friday, to allow for um, anyone who is qualified to run and oversee a facility like this to apply for funds for, uh, purchase.
So the county wants a nonprofit. It wants to, um, incentivize a nonprofit to take this on.
Correct. So. I don't know. I don't know. There, there is, there is no upper limit at this point. So.
If, if it's to create a warehouse, like a centralized distribution center for banks and the like to take food.
So, you know, so an organization like Share or, um, one of the other larger factories who, you know, distributes food to seniors or for school lunch programs. Uh, you know, for students who may not be able to afford lunches, they're redistributing commodities. Um, we just don't, we don't have a large-scale capacity site for that sort of thing. So we'd have to be able to handle food storage and refrigeration, uh, trucks coming in and out. Uh, so, um, stay tuned, because I'm kind of figuring this out as I go, but, uh, that's, that's the gist.
Great.
Uh, that's all I have. Again, if, uh, Nicole and Bob can, uh, stick around.
Right. Meeting's adjourned.
Sounds good, isn't it?
We're coming in second.
Yeah. I consent.
Comment, send a comment.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.
Be well.
Thank you, folks. Be well.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen with the beautiful here and if you want to stop recording, if you want to. Yeah, you can stop recording.